We'll call the Tuesday, December 14th, 2021 Reno County Commission Meeting to Order. At this time, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance along with prayer by Pastor Ron Keiker from Countryside Baptist Church.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you and praise you, Lord, for your love and grace. We thank you that the commission has opened up the opportunity to pray and to seek your face before these important meeting, this important meeting. We thank you that, that as we turn our eyes to you, that you promise in James to give us wisdom if we ask. And so this morning, we asked for that, though we know with you, there's no small decisions. And so I appreciate the gravity and weight of responsibility and leadership that these men have. We pray that you would give them wisdom, Lord. We pray for all here, Lord, that you would guide this meeting, that your presence and your guidance and your direction and your peace would be present. God, thank you so much for your grace, and we thank you for your Son, Jesus. In his name, amen.
Welcome all of you here to today's meeting. Comment I want to make now, and that's a tremendous thank you and appreciation for the volunteer fire departments. Last week, it was a pretty good fire with wind from the south, and then all of a sudden, it changed to the north, and these folks really acted. So Rick Graber, a fireman from the Prairie Fire Department, as well as the other departments who were called in, all we can do is say thank you and appreciate that. And in my conversations, as I went down there and looked at that, there was probably at least four houses that were in danger and could have been more, had it not been the quick action. And as I talked with the Wichita Task Force, they had tremendous appreciation of the quality of work that our volunteer fire departments in Reno County did. So just wanted to pass that along, that we appreciate that. And I know you had to stay down there all night because of the trees that were involved in the draws, so. A couple of sanctions, so. Thank you. Public comment on items not on the agenda at this time? Come forward to the podium and state your name and address, and limit your remarks to not more than five minutes per item. And so are there any additions or revisions to the agenda, Commissioner Friesen?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sellers?
No, I don't see how it can get any longer.
Well, it can a little bit. Mr. Sellers, I would like to add the emergency declaration.
It's going to, huh?
Taking your spot over. I'd like to include the emergency declaration as the first business item, so that Adam can get back to work. And go ahead. Randy, do you have additions?
Yes, I'd like to add a 30-minute executive session for non-elected personnel at the end of the meeting.
And do we do anything with the designations? That'll be covered?
Of the appointment?
Yeah.
We'll talk about that for clarification when the consent agendas have a motion.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we had an executive session at the end of the meeting for 30 minutes and an emergency declaration at the start of the business items.
I move we approve the amended agenda.
Move the executive to approve the amended agenda. Roll call.
One question on that. I think most everyone here is here for 7H. I don't know if it would be worth moving that up on the business items as well. Am I, do I have that right?
Which one?
I guess 7H is the Midstates Materials.
Weighs down on a lengthy business item list. I don't know if that would be worth.
I think it's a good idea, Mr. Chairman, if we can.
You want to move 7H to where then, Commissioner Friesen?
Just, just under the emergency management ad, so bring it to the top of the business items under, under the new addition.
Request to maybe go underneath Reno County, Reno Kingman Joint Fire District. Is it all right to put it underneath that?
Sure.
Because that won't take too long either. So if that's okay with everyone, we will put 7H under what originally was 7A, the request from Reno Kingman. Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes. All right. We have a long consent agenda, and most of this is end-of-the-year items that we have to take up every year. The first one is just the vouchers for bills or payments owed by the county. Several change orders involved in this has to do with tax changes. Resolution 2021 dash.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight is authorizing a transfer of Health Department funds to the Health Department Capital Outlay Fund. Resolution 2021-29 is authorizing a transfer of Noxious Weeds General Fund and Noxious Weeds Capital Outlay Fund. Resolution 2021-30 is authorizing a transfer of Public Works Road and Bridge Funds to the Special Highway Improvement Fund. Resolution 2021-31 is authorizing a transfer of funds to the County Equipment Reserve Fund. Resolution 2021-32 is authorizing a transfer of funds to the Multi-Year Capital Improvement Reserve Fund. Resolution 2023-33 is authorizing a transfer of all Fire District General Funds to the Fire District Special Equipment Funds. Appointment of clerk to the Clay Township Board, an appointment of a clerk to Walnut Township Board, and then the opioid litigation settlement. And that's the consent agenda today. Take the motion to approve or take any item out of that.
Chairman, I'd move that we approve the consent agenda items 6A through 6K.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Could I provide some clarification to the opioid litigation?
Yes. They moved a second.
What's involved there are two things. There's a memorandum of understanding between the Attorney General of the State of Kansas, the Kansas League of Municipalities, and the Kansas Association of Counties with respect to statewide litigation regarding this pending in Kansas. It's pursuant to House Bill 2079, in which the memorandum of understanding provides for the distribution of settlement funds, which are, will be provided on a nationwide settlement involving four pharmaceuticals and, and one manufacturer, which is in bankruptcy, Purdue Pharma. We've been asked, we need to, what you'll be approving today is a resolution in which Reno County joins the statewide litigation regarding the opioid epidemic, so that we can, our claims will be assigned to the Attorney General along with those of all other municipalities that have filed litigation, and so as to be able to participate in this settlement. That would be Resolution 2021-34, that's the next assignment. Also involved in that is an assignment of our claims to the State of Kansas in order to prosecute those as part of the settlement. These only pertain to those five particular defendants. Also involved, and involves the litigation, is a settlement participation form that we received, in which Reno County agrees to, with the, the entities that are pursuing a settlement, that we will participate in the settlement agreement that has been negotiated between various attorneys representing the parties and the defendants. The settlement participation form is one in which, there are two of them. One pertains to a, what's called the Jansen Settlement. That's a settlement with, with the Jansen Company, which was, which was done separately. And the other participation form pertains to what's called the Distributor Settlement, and that pertains to all other parties. So this needs to be approved by Reno County, and, and the, so a motion to approval today would authorize the chairman to sign, and then the settlement participation forms in which we agree to participate in the nationwide settlement will be emailed to the attorneys who are representing us in Colorado, or forwarding to, to the principals that are involved in the settlement. So I would be asked, your approval today would be approval of all of those matters.
That would also requiring, adding, if it's all right with the man who made the motion as a second, to include the words Resolution 2021-34.
Correct. And I'm sorry for the lateness, the tardiness in getting this just on the agenda quickly, but we just received these documents in the middle of last week when the agenda was going out.
That all right with you to add those resolution numbers to this?
Correct.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes. At this time, we'll go into the business items, which would be first, the emergency declaration regarding last week. Friday.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Adam Weiser, Risk Management Director. So last Friday, on the 10th, we had a large fire in Prairie Prairie North, near the Cape 14 in our entire area, that Commissioner Hurst talked about a little bit ago. During that fire, our calculations, we burned somewhere around 348 acres, and there was some house saved by the firefighters, so they did an amazing job. But part of that, we had to get resources from the state. So the state had pre-staged resources on Friday, had pre-staged the task force in Wichita, and they also pre-staged some, some air assets. So to be able to tap into those, Wichita Task Force, we had to declare a local emergency, which we've done so. Having this local emergency in place will probably benefit us later in the week. What I printed off for you in that packet there is some of the fire weather that we're looking at tomorrow. So if you, on your first page there, it talks about the short prairie grass, mixed prairie grass, and tall prairie. We're usually around the, the mixed prairies where we look at our Grassland Fire Index. Grassland Fire Index is considered catastrophic when it's 80 and above, and tomorrow, we're projected to be at 150 in the afternoon, with wind gusts up to 64 miles an hour. So we're expecting a high fire danger day tomorrow, so we're hoping nothing happens, but we want to be prepared for it. With the disaster declaration in place, it allows us to immediately call for state resources, and then we'll also do some pre-planning on our side, where we'll have some Reno County Task Force pre-established with our volunteer districts. So if anything happens in any one of our fire districts, we can hopefully have our volunteers out there a little quicker than what we do on the other end. So with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
I'm not one to arbitrarily suggest that we should do a burn ban, but can we look at doing a burn ban for Wednesday and Thursday? How much notice? What's the procedure on that? And I just bring that up as a thought, okay? Just because of price barrels?
Currently.
Just asking.
Currently, under our disaster declaration, we can do a burn ban for any time in this seven days. Without this resolution in place, without this declaration in place, we would have to do a separate one for a burn ban. But if we just want to say we're going to do a burn ban for Wednesday and Thursday, we can do that with this disaster declaration. And notice doesn't have to go out. What we would do is we would try to put something in writing, we'd do a memory in the record for the dispatch center, and then when individuals would call into our dispatch center to report that they're going to light their control burn or trash barrels, they would tell them there's a burn ban in place and they cannot.
I can't imagine anybody starting a brush fire or anything, but I just, I'm more concerned with trash barrels and things, because I think people aren't going to go out and burn a.
If that's supported by the board, I am right on the same page with you. I think that's a great idea.
I'd like to ask Rick, because he's out in the front lines, what do you think's of that idea? Is it necessary?
Yes, to a degree it is. If we limit it to the, to the time when we're under the extreme danger and not extend it past, that's, that's a good idea.
That was my thought on specifically for Thursday, with regard to the high winds. Think it's talking about coming on Wednesday evening?
It looks like a Wednesday afternoon is really when the high winds start.
I wouldn't want to put it on for a month or something like that. I would just think maybe, maybe just Wednesday and Thursday would be a possibility. I don't know what the rest of, this is kind of off of the clear blue sky for the rest of the Commissioners and me too, but.
I'm just surprised we don't already have an ordinance or policy in place that just restricts burning and when, when we're in an extreme danger.
So currently, under the county burn resolution, you are not supposed to burn on a very high or above day. However, there's some individuals that call in, when they're advised that it's very high or above, and they should not burn, they still choose to burn. As it stands currently, our dispatch center will not tell them they cannot burn. They'll just advise them, you're outside the county burn resolution, and then ask them if they're going to burn.
But, but those are more wind-related, right?
That's, that's more the, the fire index. So currently, under agricultural burns, there's no wind regulation in our current resolution or the Kansas administrative regulations. It is solely for the purpose of open burning. Agriculture open burning is exempt from those wind regulations.
So we advise people not to burn in using the scale?
Correct. Anything very high and above, we tell them they're outside the resolution, but it's still.
But they have an option to do it?
Currently, yes.
Although they are liable, we put some rules into effect, what, Adam, three, four years ago, with regard to open burning, and that puts a liability on the person that's burning, if it's in those categories.
Yes, sir. In 2017, when we did the county burn resolution, there was some criminal penalties that were attached to that, and there's actually a case going through the court systems right now, that they're prosecuting an individual that burnt one side of his field, and one of firefighters were still there putting out the fire, and went to the other side of the road and lit another one. So there, a group of us have met by what the commission instructed me to do a few months ago, several months ago, to come up with some mitigating measures for these wildfires. And this is one of the items that we wanted to discuss with you in, in our January work sessions, is how we can, we can be more clear with the public and make sure that they know they're not supposed to burn, if there's criminal penalty attached to those.
I'll be interested in that. It just seems like we ought to just prohibit burning at some level, you know, at least catastrophic or extreme, like, I don't know why.
It is, yeah.
Is prohibited?
Yes.
It's prohibited, but if they call in and say, I'm going to burn, we don't tell them, you cannot burn. They just take down the information, and then our firefighters end up getting sent to it.
Okay, that doesn't sound like prohibited, but.
And I would agree with you, and that's, that's something we want to bring out in the innovation sessions.
Well, I want to reiterate Chairman's comments, and thanks to the firefighters and Adam, your work, and appreciate your, your forward thinking on, on the next few days and support what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll just leave it like that, and come there. Okay, Rick, request from Reno Kingman Joint Fire District 1 to increase the budget for purchase of used brush trucks, which is approved by four county commissioners on 622-21. Do you have an update on that?
I have an update, yes, unforeseen circumstances. That truck, we don't have any idea when it's going to be available. And it's also come up with some mechanical issues that makes me a little bit wary of the dependability of it. So we started looking for some other trucks, similar trucks out there, and there are few and far between. Fortunately, I know a salesman in Kansas City, and he found one in Florida. He had it shipped up to Kansas City. At this time, right now, it's going through their shop. It's a 2006, with, it was a power company line truck. It's got 80,000 miles on it. So he's going through it. I'm hoping to go up either later this week or first next week and look it over real close and see if it fits, but it, in that aspect, it is, it will cost me more for that than it did for the original truck. That's why I'm asking to bump my budget up to 70,000 to help cover that difference. Everything else is basically cost to stay the same. So just a purchase of a better truck.
Any questions from Chief Graber?
I move we approve the request from the Reno Kingman Joint Fire District for this purchase.
Second. Move the second to approve the request from Reno Kingman Joint Fire District as presented. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes. Thank you.
Chairman, I have one, one comment on, on the procedure here for, I still think we're, we're in the weeds a little much on individual purchases from fire, fire districts, and I know it's been previous policy, but, you know, and I know this isn't necessarily an agenda item, but it would, I think we ought to look at maybe, you know, having this run through emergency management and through Randy, the recommendation placed on the consent agenda, unless there's, there's a dispute amongst the fire district and staff, and not require fire, fire chiefs to always come here and report on purchases like this. But that's just my, my thought.
I think you bring up a good point, because I think all of our fire chiefs are working, have jobs, have things to do, and I think that's an item to discuss. You could discuss that with Adam and Randy and see where we go, and also with the fire chiefs.
Well, if there's consensus, maybe we could ask Randy for recommendation in next year sometime.
And also, we have a new personnel coming on with regard to the fire. Maybe that's a good time to look at.
And this one was on, just for clarification, this one was on business agenda items, because he had already made a presentation, and the amount increased. That's why it was set on business items. A lot of times with department heads, you'll see capital purchases that were budgeted on consent agenda, so this would be the same for fire districts if, if it's set within their budget already. This was a change. That's why it was a business item.
Personally, I'm comfortable with your recommendations, even if they, they change on, on smaller purchases like this, but maybe check with the other Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, now, we will take on now what was originally 68, case number 2021-07, a request by T. Real Estate LLC, applicant Midstates Materials LLC, for a conditional use permit to establish an aggregate storage yard on a portion of a parcel of land. The lease area is approximately 12 acres of land, Zoned AG Agricultural District, and located on the east side of North Wilson Road, approximately 1,200 feet south of the intersection of North Wilson Road and West Neckerson Boulevard.
Good morning, Commissioner Mark Myachin, County Planner. This is a request to establish an aggregate storage yard on approximately 12 acres of the land, south of the intersection of West Neckerson Boulevard and North Wilson Road. The entire parcel is about 75 acres. They are only proposing to use about the northern 12 acres of this parcel. There will be no blasting, mining, crushing, or washing of the aggregate. They're only going to be storing and selling clean aggregate on this property. There will also be no harsh chemicals stored on, on this property either. The applicant is going to utilize an existing railroad spur that is on the west side of North Wilson Road to offload the aggregate. After that, they will cross North Wilson Road and travel down the existing railroad right-of-way to the subject property, and that's where they will offload the aggregate and store the aggregate. They will not be traveling down North Wilson Road and entering the property off of that road, they'll be going down the railroad right-of-way. The railroad spur and the railroad right-of-way is really not subject to this conditional use permit application. It is railroad right-of-way. My regulations do not govern railroad right-of-way, and so they can use that railroad spur for this property or for another property if they want to. From the original application, the applicant has changed how they will access the property. They've also changed the hours of operation and when the aggregate will be offloaded from the railroad spur. So they have, through this public hearing process, worked with the Reno Township Board, they've worked with the Planning Commission on concerns that they've had, and so they have changed what was originally submitted in their application. Staff does have concerns with floodplain and also concerns with the levee. If you, if you know this area, when they travel down that railroad right-of-way, they're going to be in the floodplain, and they're also going to be going up and over the accredited levee from the city of Hutchinson. However, I would say that those concerns are staff's concerns and should not really be concerns of the commission. They will have to work with staff and, and the state to be able to obtain floodplain development permission to make sure that this road that they are proposing to construct will not cause any undue harm to the floodplain or the surrounding properties in that area. They have been working preliminarily with the city of Hutchinson to see what their thoughts were with that, although I do not have any written correspondence from the city. At this time, testimony was provided that the city is at least amenable to the possibility of allowing them to drive up and, and over that levee. I want to kind of diverge a little bit and say that there was a lot of confusion in the beginning with this case, and maybe a lot of that confusion was, was based off of, of my misunderstanding of what was going on. Originally, there was an application that was submitted, site plan was submitted, plan of operation was submitted. I based a staff report on what I thought was going on with their proposal. When we got to the public hearing, testimony provided by the Midstates was different than what I had thought was going on, and so that caused a lot of confusion by myself and also the planning commission. So that's why in your packet, you see essentially two staff reports. I wrote an original staff report, thinking that they were going to enter the property off the main line of the track. Testimony at that hearing said that, no, they weren't planning on doing, they were planning on coming in off of Wilson Road. As you know, now, that it has different, has changed again. And so based off of that confusion, based off of testimony that was presented at the planning commission meeting, the planning commission directed me to go back and, and review my original staff report and note that if there are any changes in that staff report from what was originally presented to what was going on at the public hearing. And so I did that. That is why you see a supplemental staff report in, in your packet of information, and really your decision today, if you should choose to make one, should be based off of that supplemental report and not necessarily what was going on in the first report. Now, that first report will give you a dialogue of what happened at the public hearing. We had this case tabled several times for, for various reasons, for that confusion. The owner wanted to go back and, or the applicant wanted to work with the township and to alleviate their concerns, and so you'll see that dialogue in there at a certain point in time. Then I, we stopped it, and I wrote the supplemental report, and they continued the discussion on the public testimony that was going on at the public hearing. My staff report in that supplemental will also contain a, a summary of the applicable regulations and also the factors that you should consider when making a decision on this. this planning case. The report, like I said, also contains a summary of the public comment that was received at that public hearing. Staff recommended approval based on the nine factors and the thirteen conditions that you see listed in the staff report. The planning commission reviewed this and held one public hearing, but that public hearing was continued over for several months. Like I said, at the end, the planning commission voted four to two to recommend approval of this request. And the planning commission actually added a fourteenth condition of approval based off of testimony and concerns that they had with dump trucks and other trucks traveling down that road right-of-way. They want to put a condition in there that says that they'd be prevented from utilizing a, a driveway to the northwest to be able to access that railroad right-of-way. If you look at the map that Midstates provided on September the seventh, two twenty twenty-one here, that is part of the conditions of approval. And if you so choose to approve of this, then that would be the way that this property would be developed. Midstates has offered to put up stop signs on the private property or the railroad right-of-way, if you will, to make people stop and look down Wilson Road and make sure there's no traffic coming. And they've also wanted to add truck crossing road signs up there to help people traveling down Wilson Road to be able to be aware that there could be some dump trucks crossing Wilson Road. Honestly, I guess I would close and say that you may recall that a protest petition was submitted on, on this case, and that was approved and accepted by the four county commissioners. And so your approval of this request will have to be by a supermajority vote. With that, I'd be happy to go through the specific conditions of approval if you would like. I don't know if they're self-explanatory, if you have questions on those. But at this point, I'll pause and see if the commission has questions at this point.
Mr. Friesen?
By pause, Mark, or you've got more to say?
No, no, I don't. I've concluded.
Okay.
Sorry.
I, I would like you to set up, or, or Randy or Joe, set up the process by which we're making the decision today and, and discuss the quasi judicial role that we have again for us. At least I'm clear. I don't know if the other commissioners want to hear that again, but.
I can, I can start out saying you, you have several options available to, to the commission. Your role as a quite a quasi judicial board is to review the case file and base your decision off of that case file. You can choose to accept the planning commission recommendation, utilizing those factors and the conditions of approval and approve of this. You can accept the planning commission recommendation. Again, you can, along with that acceptance, you can add conditions of approval, or you can subtract conditions of approval if you think there are other conditions of approval that staff and the planning commission did not take into consideration. You can certainly do that. You can table this request if you want to review the case file additionally. Table this request and refer it back to the planning commission. If you do something like that, I would need to know specific questions that you would want to have answered. If you did something like that, then we would meet at the next planning commission meeting. We could get those answers to the commission, and then we would come back at a future date, and I would present those answers to the board. Lastly, you can deny this request, utilizing the factors that you must review for all, all planning committees cases. And so those are really the, the options.
Can you pull up the, the overview, the map on the screen?
Thank you.
Essentially, the proposed area is right in the middle of that?
Yes, the, the property is identified as the solid purple line. That was the thousand-foot notification boundary that we used for this case. The purple dotted line that you see is the, the southern boundary of the lease area where the aggregate will be stored. There will be no aggregate stored on anything south of that dotted line. If the applicant would want to use that area in the future, then that will require another conditional use permit to expand what is out there right now, in which case we would go back through the public hearing procedure again.
Can you point to where the, the school is? Is there a school close to this?
The school is not on that map. If you're referring to Reno Valley School, it is southeast of there. It is not on that map because it's on Seventeenth Avenue, so it's not there. The map, that map just depicts mainly the thousand-foot notification area. It wasn't meant to give a several-mile overview of the area.
I'm still formulating things. So if there's other commissioners that want to chime in, it'd be great.
Mark, when was this case first brought to your department date?
Yeah, it's in my case file here. I want to say it was in May. I can get you the exact dates in the case file.
When, when did it first go to the planning commission?
Let me get the case file.
Commissioner.
I think the commissioners have watched most of the tapes of the planning commission. And as you indicated, it's, was postponed several times during the process.
The application was submitted on May sixth, twenty twenty-one. The public hearing was originally on June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
My point in asking that is that it's my desire, hope the other commissioners agree with this, that this has been going on since May and June. Planning commission has met numerous times on this project. And I think we, from my standpoint, we need to make a decision on this today.
I would maybe add to that, Commissioner, that due to that confusion, the case was originally tabled in, in June. We had a, a situation with that. We had to go back and, and wanted to take additional testimony. Another situation occurred where the applicant wasn't ready to present additional findings with their case to the planning commission. So they, in fact, did request this be tabled. So that was another month. We also had a situation where we only had four planning commission members at one meeting, and so they could not come to a, a majority decision. So therefore, it was tabled again. So there are a few things in there.
I understand. The, I think there's reasons on both sides of this case. I've come to the feeling in my own mind that I don't feel like it's the best use of that property. And, Chairman, I would make a motion to deny case twenty twenty-one dash oh seven, a request by T. Real Estate LLC, requesting a conditional use permit to establish an aggregate storage yard on a portion of partial Zoned AG Agricultural District. And I would base this motion on the following two factors. Whether the location of the proposed use is compatible to the other land uses in the surrounding neighborhood. This neighborhood is comprised of farmland and residential houses. There are no industrial land uses currently in the neighborhood. Second factor would be whether the proposed use is made necessary or desirable because of changed or changing conditions. The neighborhood consists mainly of large agricultural partials. There is no indication this area is trending towards a more commercial or industrial use. That's my motion and the factors in my motion.
I'd second it and like further conversation on it.
It's been moved and seconded. Anyone want the motion read back again?
No, well, and that's maybe where I have a comment. I, I think it's important that the motion is drafted with all of our input. And, and I, and I appreciate Commissioner Sellers, that he did a great job of, of putting his thoughts on the motion. I, I think, given, you know, the, the potential of, of this issue being contested legally, that it would be worth the time to have staff. If we have consensus here that, that denial is the appropriate path, that we have staff further refine all of our thoughts and put that into a, a written motion for the record that, because I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with, with Sellers. I, I would like to put some of my thoughts in, in writing and collaborate with staff on whether those are, are appropriate for the factors and, or not, and then have a written motion that's, that's better developed. I'm not saying yours isn't, but I think it's an opportunity. And I think it's pretty common, once consensus is reached, for, for staff to develop a, a written motion for issues like this. So it's, it's done, it's done well and right the first time, so.
Well, Commissioner Friesen, I understand your conversation here. I guess I would ask our legal counsel if the motion that I made is an appropriate motion in this particular case and thorough enough. I believe it is.
I, I believe it's legally sufficient. You cited the factors and your reasoning. I might comment that in the event you decide this today and each of the commissioners opines reasons, if, if there's support for this motion and the positions of the commissioners in support of it relative to the factors that need to be considered, or if they're articulated today, I would be back with a resolution which incorporates all of those into the document, just as we did with the Pretty Prairie Wind case. So I think it's important that those be included, but I don't know that you'd have to, have to have that all decided upon before you vote.
I appreciate what you're trying to get accomplished, but I think the discussion with regarding this is always a matter of record and that the motion needs to be tidy and will be included in the resolution as those portions, is the way I understand it.
I, I just think it's, it's bad form in general to not, like an issue like this, I, I think you would find like more sophisticated counties and cities will have staff take input and draft a written motion that's very precise and tidy, as you say. And if we, if we try to do it orally, I, I think it's, it leaves opportunity for contest, but that's just my opinion.
I, from my standpoint, I found this a tough, tough decision to make. And I think the planning commission, by evidence, did have. And so when I got to looking at it and trying to justify where I was at and, and hear, hear all sides as best I could, and I did attend one of the planning and zoning commission meetings where it was discussed and voted on. So I, I went back and looked at the comprehensive plan. And I, I could have written two or three pages, but, and it didn't help a whole lot in making decisions because just like the final, what, whether the proposed conditional use permit would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the comprehensive plan. So I, I, I fully agree on reviewing the comprehensive plan, and this was from the staff. I can acknowledge some aspects of the plan may show compliance. I believe two goals stand out above all others. Those are that business should look first to the cities within the county for new development locations and ensure that future development occurs in a timely fashion and is adequately served by roads and other public facilities and services. Locating these types of business in a city ensures there are adequate roads to service the site for the owner of the business and customers rather than assessing the site by township, gravel road, and railroad right-of-way. Well, I can agree with part of that and part of it I can't, I have problems with, okay? So I went into the comprehensive plan. And existing planning efforts in Reno County, I want to take some of your time up here just to go through this, but the balance personal property rights with the rights of the larger community, focus limited revenue to preserving existing infrastructures, all of these don't apply. Define and preserve a sense of place in Reno County. Accommodate new development while limiting adverse impacts to county facilities. Review the county's existing land use policies to determine the best balance of regulation. And these are the things that the whole planning commission had to take in effect as well as staff. Correct me anytime I missay something here, okay?
Yeah.
Pulling some things out of here, out of the comprehensive plan, is the role of Reno County remain, will remain one of seeking, seeking opportunities to assure that new developments occur to the benefit of all affected property owners. Some non-use ag uses are appropriate for the rural areas, including bulk storage uses, must be judicious, judiciously located to minimize the impacts associated with those businesses. People who invest in housing within the rural areas of Reno County should be afforded protection from outside impacts that might reduce the value of those investments through a judicious application of appropriate zoning and subdivision regulations, as well as other adopted codes and standards. I don't believe that a homeowner, and this is not from that, I don't believe that a home builder knowingly, using any common sense at all, would build next to an existing business and then complain about that business or try to force it out of business. Now, that's just my sentiments with regarding to building in the, in, in a county. To the contrary, many, this is from that, to the contrary, many commercial activities are often more appropriately located in the rural areas, such as quarries, landfills, salvage yards, bulk agricultural and petroleum products, and the like. Goals and objectives for any community are intended to identify the aspirations and intentions of that community with respect to various topics or elements of the planning process. And that surely indeed did happen in that, in that process that the planning and zoning went through. And the, the public had an opportunity to be involved. This site has easy, relatively safe access to K ninety-six, both on and off, or ingress and egress, or, in a couple other words. Railroad siding can be used as county, as, railroad siding can be used as county has no jurisdiction on railroad right-of-way. That's correct. K and O is a muchly needed and valued carrier, not only for Reno County, but also other counties. Safety and floodplain are considerations, as was brought out. Promote business and industrial development consistent with the overall quality of life within Reno County. Coordinate future development with the physical environment, placing a premium upon developing in harmony with existing natural features. And I think very important to consider here, regardless of how this vote is taken, is the role of Reno County will remain one of seeking opportunities to assure that new developments occur to the benefit of all affected property owners. So I hope you can see where the So I hope you can see where the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as this county commission, has a tough decision to be made. And we welcome any opportunity for new business, provided it's appropriately located. I think that's key. Still can unload and load on sighting and haul to different locations. I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction over that railroad right-of-way, so that can still be utilized, and has been utilized, for loading and unloading. So I guess that's, those are some of the comments and things that I looked at in trying to come up with a decision. So we have a motion and a second to deny the application, case number 2021-07, based upon those factors, as pointed out in the motion. Are there any other discussion? Seeing none? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes. And I thank you for all the time and effort put into this, and staff put a lot of time, the Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission put in a lot of time, and I guarantee you, it was a tough decision, as we looked at all the land use regulations and try not to impose upon the land use regulations.
I'd like to make a couple follow-up comments. One is, I would assume there's, there's a place in the county that this would be supported. And I, it seemed like this was going in the wrong direction, and I hope the chamber and our economic interests are attempting to find an alternative solution to this, because certainly not a great situation that we're, we feel the need to deny development in the county. And so anything we can do to support an alternative location, I think we ought to do.
Wholeheartedly agree, but let's maintain, see what we can do to help this potential business and employer, as well as the railroad and the county. So, let's work together on making this happen. Thank you, Daniel. That was a concern of mine, also. Very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Highlands Tower lease, extension with IDIOTEC.
Chairman, I'd like the record to note I have a conflict of interest and will be abstaining.
Okay. Mr. Sellers?
I would move we approve the revised lease as presented with IDIOTEC.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Friesen?
Abstain.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hirst?
Yes. Next will come the Register of Deeds annual update. Phil?
Good morning, Commissioners. Michelle Updike, Register of Deeds. I'm here to present my annual report. Probably a lot of changes since I was last up here with you guys. E-recording has really taken off. It's one of our, I'd say, one of our best assets we have right now. It was tremendously helpful during COVID. We've probably e-recorded more documents now than we do, than we did, and then through the mail, which saves on postage costs. And, but with that, we almost need another full-time person managing the e-recording. Right now, it's me. I handle all the e-recording coming in, plus all of my duties, plus overseeing all the office duties as well. But, all of our submitters really appreciate the e-recording and the efforts that we go to be more technologically advanced. Our mission here at the Register of Deeds office is to provide all services required by law, including the documentation and record preservation of real estate, oil and gas, mineral plant maps, vital records in state and federal tax liens. We provide a convenient and professional office for the public to utilize our records, and we will consistently strive to be aware of statutory changes, technology advancements, and development of staff. And we will provide the citizens of Reno County quality and timely service. To withhold that mission, we do have some goals that we still want to achieve. Of course, number one on those goals is 100% digital land registry, which we're still working on. IT is, that whole project is under review with IT and our office, we're working together on that. We also would like to access, have the public access our images of records online, or a subscription fee, which will bring in revenue to the county. We do want to search for a more user-friendly, efficient land records management system, also referred to as LRMS. We want our customers to be more reliant on a good land records management system. We have a lot of books in our office. If you've ever visited there, I'm sure that's the first thing you see, is all books, which are great. We do have researchers that prefer to use the books rather than the computer, and we do have all of this great shelving that we purchased, oh, probably about six years ago, that house all of those books. But there will be a day when those books are going to be less needed. And so, that's kind of where we're headed now. And we also want to offer fraud protection programs through our LRMS. Fraud protection would be, any time a document in our office is recorded, we index the parties that are involved. People can have an option to register their email with us, so every time their name is indexed in the land registry system, they would get an email alert, letting them know that, hey, this deed has been filed regarding your name. They'll have an opportunity to review the deed that was recorded. If they were expecting that, there's no problem. If they weren't expecting that, they can call us and immediately go with steps towards reversing that or looking into it. We also want to start accepting credit and debit cards. I know it's a little old-fashioned that we still accept checks and cash, but we do want to start moving that way. And recently, there is a veteran discount program where veterans file their DD-214 discharge papers. It's a good incentive, too, because we'll always have that on record, because sometimes those records do get misplaced, or destroyed, or lost. And if we had a record of them, they would always have access to them. The military records in our office are not public record. They're only released to the veteran or immediate family record, or immediate family members or funeral home services. And in filing those, or even not filing those, they can register for a discount card to use at local businesses. We'd like to start moving that direction. Cedric County did it a couple years ago, and they've had great success with it. So those are our goals, which we want to work towards achieving. As you can see in all the monthly updates I've given you, our workload's increased. We used to only take in about 600 to 800 documents a month when I first started eight years ago. It has been growing, but it's definitely hit a high rise in recordings in 2020. And thinking that that was just COVID-related, I don't know how kind of would be COVID-related, but the market did change in that time period, which resulted in a lot of mortgage filings, And also, property was being purchased, a lot more property was being purchased. And that still continues today. I think this will be a trend that continues to go. It's kind of hard to predict the market when it comes to real estate, in my opinion, but any time the market changes, it affects our work. And of course, when people are buying up more properties and the market's really active, our copy requests for our office increase as well. People will call the office and want us to email them copies. We do charge for that. Of course, that's another, you know, duty that is put on our employees to fulfill, so we bring in up to $1,000 to $1,200 a month just in those services. Is there anything else I could answer for you? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Phil, you're authorized a part-time person in 2022. Has that job position been created for that position, and has that search began?
The search hasn't begun for that yet. I really wasn't too sure when I could start advertising for that. I guess I was thinking if it was approved for 2022 budget, that's when I would start looking for someone, but I could be wrong on that.
Well, you're saying you need help, and we're saying you can have help as soon as that budget starts, so.
Okay.
Seems to me that that would be a positive move to start looking.
Absolutely. We do have a job description outlined for that. We would like to start looking for people immediately for that.
The other comment I might make, and I don't know if this is possible, but you've got this fee of a dollar per page on the search work that you do for people. That seems pretty modest. I'm wondering if maybe you couldn't review this with the county administrator and see if there isn't a staff time plus a fee. You know, only bringing in $900 a month on pages isn't really helping to pay for the time of your staff.
Yeah. That's what it's always been when I've been there.
You know, the world's changing.
Exactly.
You know, I just, it's worth consideration, you know?
Absolutely.
Maybe there's a X number of dollars of searching fee, and then a page, you know, if you could double or triple that, that could certainly help your budget.
And, you know, once the documents are available for subscription, that would actually remove a duty from our staff, and actually increase, I think, the revenue even more, because we could offer, you can do a pay-per-print, where if you're just wanting to print a document through the records, you can pay as you go, you can have a full year's access. Some counties charge $1,500 to $2,000 a year for that.
It's pretty fun.
Yeah. You can do three months, and, you know, make it pretty flexible for them. Yeah, that's a, that's a big goal that we want to go towards, because recording documents in our office always takes precedent over copy requests. But people, our customers, you know, they have a deadline, too, and when they need their documents immediately, it's hard for us to accommodate that, especially when it's a large list of them sometimes. And they, as far as I've been concerned, they've been pretty understandable with that, but there's times when they want us to stop everything that we're doing and unfortunately do their work for them, which is to come in and get copies, but.
Michelle, thank you for the report. I know here you have about $372,000 in a technology fund. Do you know what percentage of that would likely be used when you award the RFP that you're working on?
I probably don't have something roughly. I can tell you that software will take up most, well, it kind of depends on what direction we want to go with the digitizing project. If we're going to do that in-house, the equipment for digitizing records is very expensive. If we're going to look at a company to do it for that, it's going to be a little bit more than that. I mean, I couldn't say that it would go over 200 grand. That seems a little too much, but.
Well, that's, that's a little more than half of your fund, so that's good.
I do have plans for some of that. I do want to buy more storage and underground vaults and storage. I want to start storing our original plat maps. They make storage containers for that that take up less space, but we're using kind of a shared room down there with everybody else, the district court, sheriffs. I want to look into getting our own. I have looked at some prices for that. I'm sorry I didn't bring them with me. But we want to start storing some of the books that we can't destroy, just for statutory reasons, but can be digitized, so we don't really need them in the office. Also, our original plats and old directories.
Well, I appreciate that you have goals here. I think the thing that I would appreciate in addition to that is if you set a time of completion, or started tracking percentage of completion, and next report, show us how you're doing on that. I think you have an opportunity, like Commissioner Sellers said, where you're a B-funded department to, again, I don't think you're ever, it doesn't seem like you're ever going to catch up until you, you know, and I don't think it's going to come from hiring more people. I don't really like the idea of adding technology and adding more people. I like the idea of, you have a big chunk of work to do, and you contracted or buy equipment or whatever, and just start knocking that out and get to a point where a majority of your records are digital and people can self-service, and then you can reduce, you can reduce ongoing expenditures. So it seems like you have plenty of funding to make one-time decisions to get caught up. And, you know, the extent we can be helpful in, you know, making decisions that create technology services that allow people, again, to self-help, and you don't need to call in and ask you to do the research, I, like, that seems to be like a high priority for any Register of Deeds, Register of Deeds official. And so I would appreciate you taking your goals to the next level and showing us how you're going to, you know, eat that elephant. Like, you know, it's a big thing here that can take a long time to, to resolve, and I think if we add more staff, I think it's going to add expense and still not going to get done in a timely fashion, so.
I think I would agree with a lot of that. I think providing, you know, updates on those goals would be a good way to stay on track. A lot of these goals do involve other, you know, department participation, so we'd have to get some kind of, get a project, get a plan together, get some people on it, hopefully make some headway with that. Yes, you're right. I agree with our customers becoming more self-service. That's really the direction a lot of things are going, and I'd like to be a part of that, too, because it will. A lot of these goals do involve other, you know, department participation, so we'd have to get some kind of, you know, project, get a plan together, get some people on it and hopefully make some headway with that. Yes, you're right. I agree with our customers becoming more self-service. That's really the direction a lot of things are going. And I'd like to be a part of that, too, because it will lighten the load for our staff.
Well, set some times and, you know, Randy can assist with, with resources that he oversees and, and, you know, he sends a report every month, so show us where that's going and I'm sure we can help.
I agree with Commissioner Friesen and Commissioner Sellers in the fact that you're looking at things and you're wanting things, but not to have a written plan with some objectives and how to get there and a timeline to get there, you'll continue to Google looking.
Yeah.
And so that's, that's my comments with regard to this is, is, we hear a lot about what you're looking at and thinking about doing, but, but with the funds you have there, I think it's time to sit down and, if I was doing it, I'd sit down and look at just what Commissioner Friesen was bringing up.
Thank you.
Plan case 2021-12, a request to amend the November 13, 2018 adopted comprehensive plan by updating a portion of Chapter Seven and Nine related to wind energy conversion systems. And we all have that information.
Yes, as you recall, on September 14th, the county commissioners directed staff and the planning commission to review and update the comprehensive plan and provide some additional guidelines related to commercial wind within our zoning regulations. So based on that directive, staff reviewed the comprehensive plan and we found that there are three pages that would require updating to comply with that directive. As you may know, the goal of the comprehensive plan is to guide the direction for development and future development within the county. The zoning regulations and the subdivision regulations are your tools that we use to implement the goals of the comprehensive plan. So the proposed amendments that are before you today set the direction through our zoning regulations. And as you will see, within those three amendments that we have proposed, there is no mandatory direction within the comprehensive plan. It only provides you options. And so I don't know if I need to read through those changes here, but they are on page 54, and they're on page 55, and then lastly, on page 62. Those are the changes that we brought forth to the planning commission and study session. After that, we set a public hearing date, and then staff recommended approval of this request, and the planning commission, after that public hearing, approved other requests by a six-to-nothing vote, so. With that, I would stand for any questions.
This has been reviewed by staff, administrator, council.
Yep, it's been reviewed by staff. We actually have the assistance of Russ Avi, who we've used in the past. Mr. Sullivan has reviewed this for legal compliance, and the planning commission reviewed it once in a study session, really had no changes. And then we set a public hearing date, took public comment at that meeting, and they recommended approval.
I would move to approve Plan Case 2021-12 as presented.
Same.
They moved and seconded. Any further questions? Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Plan Case 2021-13, a request to amend Article 1-105, Article 13, Article 15-111 of the April 2016 zoning regulations and create Article 24, C-WEX Commercial Wind Energy Conversion Systems District, and amend the Table of Contents page.
So this case is related to a series of text amendments to the current zoning regulations as directed by the county commissioners. There are six proposed amendments ultimately with, with this directive. We're going to be looking at the Table of Contents, Article 1103, which will be covered in Case 2021-14, Article 1-105, Article 13, Article 15-111, and then Article 24 will be created new now. They're fairly, fairly simple, a lot of them. The first one is the Table of Contents page where we are going to be adding Article 24 to the Table of Contents in our zoning regulations. I would note that Article 23 that you see highlighted in, in your packet, that is not part of, of this approval as that is related to the actual new wind regulations. The next one is under Article 1-105, we are simply adding the C-WEX or C-WEX zoning district to the list of current zoning districts that we have within our zoning regulations. On the bottom of, of that page and in that paragraph, we're going to be striking that last section as it's kind of confusing because per the directive of the county commissioners, the C-WEX zoning district does not have any other associated regulations with it, only governing commercial wind through the conditional use permit process. So having some of that language in there talking about minimum acreage requirements could be confusing to staff and, and people reviewing the regulations. So we're going to strike that portion of that paragraph.
What page is that? I'm trying to keep up with you here.
I don't know, page in your packet, it's, it's Article 1-105. Here you go. Randy's got it on the board.
Yeah, I was trying to, yeah, I was trying to.
So on the bottom, you'll see we'll be striking the minimum acreage requirements. That's already contained in another article within the regulations, so it's not really necessary there, it's kind of redundant. So when you add that C-WEX zoning district, it could become confusing. The next article is Article 13. Again, we're just going to be adding the C-WEX zoning district. And as you see with that, there's no maximum height buildings, there's no minimum lot dimensions, there's no minimum acreage for the C-WEX zoning district. Again, we're just doing it through the conditional use permit process. No other regulations will apply to that zoning district. As far as minimum yard requirements, it does reference saying, see Article 24, which is that zoning district, and then Article 24 will again refer you back to Article 23, which is going to be the proposed wind regulations. Article 15-111 is the next one, and that's probably the most important one per the directive of the commission. In Article 15-111, we have several prohibited uses already within our zoning districts, and the proposal is to add a seventh. And this paragraph talks about the fact that nobody in the current zoned area of the county will be permitted to apply for a conditional use permit. Now, how we define the current zoned area is through those two Reno County resolutions. Resolution 2016-09 is the current resolution for the zoned area of the county when we adopted the current zoning regulations. And Resolution 2020-10 is for the area of Southeast Reno County that was unzoned at one time that we just recently zoned back in 2020. So those two areas will help define what the current zoned area of the county is because if this goes forward and the commission decides to expand zoning countywide with that C-WEX zoning district, that distinction needs to be made so we know what is the current zoned area of the county. Further in that paragraph here, no person in the eastern part of the county or as defined by those resolutions is going to be permitted to apply for a rezone to the C-WEX zoning district. So that will not be allowed with this passage of this text amendment. And then lastly, the last sentence there is we have to define what a commercial wind energy conversion system is. That definition is actually in Article 23, which has yet to be adopted by, by the commissioners. The last text amendment is the actual C-WEX zoning district. Essentially, what this says here is that except for floodplain regulations, there are no regulations within this zoning district for scissors to abide by. As you may know, if you are in a floodplain, you still have to get a floodplain development permit, even though you are in the western part of the county, if your building or activity is located within a floodplain. Other than that, if you wanted to establish a commercial wind project in this part of the county, then you would need to apply for a conditional use permit. So those are the proposed text amendments that are affected by the directive that the commission gave staff and the planning commission. Staff recommended denial of the text amendment to Article 15-111. However, staff did recommend approval of the other text amendments. Reason we recommend denial of the amendment prohibiting wind is because, you know, we believe that this is a legitimate land use and should have the same opportunity as the other land uses that are based off of our conditional use permit type of zoning. Staff really believes that if the commission should decide to prohibit wind countywide, that would be something that we, as staff, could support that. It was pretty hard for staff to justify the fact that we want to say that commercial wind is not appropriate in the eastern part of the county, but it may be appropriate in the western part of the county.
Why is that?
You know, because it's, it's the same land use. It still goes through the same type of conditional use permit process and review. When you are prohibiting a land use, you're denying everybody that opportunity to apply for that conditional use permit, and you're denying everybody that voice to be able to come to a, a public hearing. You know, a person should be allowed, such as what we had, to apply for a conditional use permit in the eastern part of the county and go through that conditional use permit process. The key would be to, as we heard, is to develop a good set of regulations, and if that person can meet those regulations, then we would go through that process and potentially we could approve something like that. But when we deny something and prohibit it outright, then nobody has that opportunity to, to go through that process anymore. The rest of my report will contain all the testimony that we had at the public hearing regarding the text amendments, as you see, and that we had several people speak out in favor of all the text amendments being approved as submitted. After the public hearing, the planning commission did recommend approval of all the text amendments as written by staff. With that, I would stand for questions on any of those.
Any questions?
I don't necessarily have a question. I mean, I feel like this is a big enough issue, we should probably put some comments in the record. Yeah, I already made comments on, on my disagreement with staff's recommendation against our request. I, I mean, I, I think we had a directive and it was pretty clear, but beyond that, I disagree fundamentally with their, their analysis that we ought to just continue the conditional use process within densely populated areas of the county. I, I think it, it in some ways could be defined as insanity to create turmoil and, and continue to support the turmoil that's been created over the last five or so years in that part of the, the county. And I think there's, there's significant public interest in, in this commission changing that trajectory and, and stopping the ongoing back and forth that, that has occurred between landowners, between staff, between the planning commission, between this commission. And we, and I just, that was my, my biggest frustration with, with staff's recommendation against our recommendation is because this commission is the only, only place where we can stop this, this cycle of, of turmoil in our county. And, and I think that was what our intent was. And so it's, I think, I think we, we need to work better at whether it's a better plan, a better understanding of what the community wants. We, we're, we're getting too many adverse decisions here at the commission level. Even today, we overrode the planning commission yet again, and certainly there's, there's some great checks and balances with that, but it would, it would be better if staff, the planning commission, the commission were all under kind of a, playing by the same set of music here, if we could. And so I, I am very interested in using our ability and, and the public interest factors that we, we can consider here to, to set a new course for this county and, and move on on this issue. I don't, I don't think without a strong decision, we're, we're going to be able to, to, to move this county forward. It's disappointing. I'm disappointed frankly in myself for, for not being able to, to help lead in a solution that gets significant wind investment in this county, but it was apparent over time that there just wasn't a, a solution available, and, and these densely populated areas just had overwhelming dissent for, for investment of, of these, these, these wind turbines. And, and so I'm supportive of the amendments, appreciate staff's work on, on, on the changes in matter of the process that got here. I, I think it's, it's just, you know, everybody has an opinion and, and I'm thankful that we can put this issue to bed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would move that we approve the amendments as presented on Plan Case 2021-13.
Second. Seconded. Further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Table from 91421, Plan Case 2020-09, a request by Reno County Planning Commission for a series of text amendments to the April 2016 edition of the Reno County zoning regulations regarding commercial wind energy conversion systems. This is one that I have a little problem with because this commission has worked a lot to build a consensus over some of the distances and some of the items within this regulations. And we were making some consensus on this, and I, I feel that we need to continue to come up regardless of the area that it's in. Consensus in working together, like you said earlier, Commissioner Friesen, to, to get that consensus on, on these regulations. And proposed regulations are the original ones proposed that we were working on before. And we talked a lot, discussed a lot about it, and, and thought maybe there was only two or three changes that we need to look at, and I think we discussed those pretty good. And, you know, there's been some new, some items that have not been new, they've just come to the, to the attention of, of, as I've kept on this. And we don't have very many to disagree on. We just got a couple or three to agree on, and I don't want to come back and have to change some of these items and go through this whole process again, and I don't think any of us want to do that. Public meetings of hearing everybody talk and so forth, we've had a lot of input, some of it. some of it we just don't agree with, and some we have to take a look at. I don't think we should abandon this process started just to save some time today. And I've visited with Mark about this and some, and I would say that I, there's only one real item that I have a situation with, and that has to do within these, and I don't want to get into all these things, but that is the creation of, creating an easement to a neighbor that interferes with my right to use my property, and that's simply called trespass zoning. And I think that's one item that we need to look at and to come up with some agreement on. And I think we don't want to get involved in any more lawsuits than possible, and I think trespass zoning is something we need to look at. Other states have it, and I'd be happy to go into more detail on that, but essentially it's giving another person the right to use my property without any compensation or without any consideration. And it's very similar to what we call a nuisance law, that we know we can't inflict, it's impractical here in our county just because of the workload on everyone. And so from my standpoint, I would like to see, I would move to table this 2021-14 until the January 11, 2022 county commission meeting, at which time the county commission can finalize the regulations contained in Article 23 as referenced in Article 24 of the previous case that the commission has had under consideration since the moratorium. One thing about it is moratoriums infect until March of '22. And so I see, I just want us to make sure that we are looking at these regulations completely. It's been a long time since we've looked at them, and I think it's necessary that we take a look at this, but I would like to get it all settled on January 11 and not proceed any further. And I realize that with that Article 24 that we've talked about would put us in limbo for about two or three weeks. But that's, I would certainly just like to offer that motion today. I don't want to put it off, but I do want us to make sure we're doing the right thing and to relook at these regulations, and I think what's good for one area is good for another area.
Well, I'm not sure that, Mr. Chairman, I'm at the point to want to second your motion, but I'm not sure that I agree with many of the comments that you just made, but I have some concerns with this document as presented. And I guess if it's appropriate, before I decide whether to second your motion, I need to ask Mark some questions pertaining to the document, please. The chairman indicated that we were working towards a consensus on several items, and I recall three or four meetings where we had a, and these items, I think, applied to setback, noise, and flicker. And to my knowledge, there never was a formal vote by majority to decide on what those items should be. And I guess, I'm looking at page 23-5, Mark, setbacks, and it uses a 2,000-foot setback. To my knowledge, the county commission never decided what a majority felt was appropriate for that number. I know what the chairman felt, but I did not know what the majority felt. Am I off base here?
First, I'd say, Commissioner Sellers, yeah, I agree with you. I don't think anything was formally decided with our work sessions. There's a lot of ideas that were thrown out, is my knowledge. The document that you have in your possession is the document that was recommended for approval by staff and the planning commission. There was another work document, if you will, that we had where several different setbacks were thrown out, several different numbers on shadow flicker and noise were out there. The document you have right now is going to be the one that was recommended by the planning commission. The 2,000-foot was what was originally done. The planning mission, the county commission had several other numbers out there. They had 2,500 feet, there was 3,000 feet, and there was five times the height of the tower as well. But again, those were just ideas and nothing, I don't think, was formally decided by the governing body here.
Did we send it back? What, did we have, is that kind of what Commissioner Sellers?
Are these numbers, the same numbers that were on the original document that came to us?
Yes. And then we had work sessions, I believe, after that where different numbers were thrown out and we wanted to have different changes to that, but nothing was really agreed upon. So we've gone back to the original document recommended by the planning commission, mainly only because of the shift in the governing body's ideas about prohibiting wind now in the eastern part of the county. We go back to the original document.
I kind of feel like it was 2,500 as well, and was there one?
No.
No?
No. Well, because I looked at charts in the Public Works Department that showed the effects of a $2,500, or 2,500-foot setback.
So maybe I'm thinking the wrong way. Was it 1,500 originally?
Well, that's where I'm coming from, is where there was, and I apologize for not being more fluid on this, but I can go back to my notes and all, but I know what the chairman was looking for at some of these meetings that we were on, but to my knowledge, we were working with a number of 1,500 feet plus, and now you're showing 2,000. No?
I don't believe so. I don't believe it was ever 1,500. It was 2,000 recommended by the planning commission, and then commissioners had discussions on changing that, that number.
Remember that you did?
It was originally 3,000, and then it was changed again, and then the yellow highlighted version that I had with a date of February the 9th settled on 2,500 and four or five times the height of the tower.
You might be thinking about the original.
Commissioner Sellers?
That was 1,000.
Yeah.
1,000, yeah, that makes...
The original, the current regulations in, in effect right now is like 1,000 feet. So it might be something to think about there.
And when we look at this, setbacks, those setbacks are based upon the foundation of the house, of a house that's next to it. And that's where I come in with the fact that that's allowing trespass zoning. If we make it on property road right-of-way, then that gets out of us of a bind of allowing and promoting an easement on another person's property. And what the footage, I think we can agree on some footage, but I think we need to look at this fact that we're creating an easement without compensation. And if we also go to 2,500 or 2,000 feet, that person, that neighboring property that's either participating or non-participating has the right to negotiate, correct? Right to negotiate less, okay? So whether you make it 2,000, 2,500 feet from a boundary or road right-of-way and leave it at tower height plus 50 feet on a boundary, as long as that other person has the right to negotiate a distance closer than that, then that can be done. You're not stopping someone from erecting. You're making an agreement to bring it closer.
I understand what you're saying. I feel unprepared to vote on this today, so I would second the chairman's motion. Is that our first meeting in January?
January 11th, yes. I don't want to prolong this. I want us to get refreshed on it and be able to make, come up with a consensus that we can agree on. And I hate to put it off, but I just think we need to be...
Well, I, my second to your motion of putting this off to the 11th is not necessarily due to all the factors that you stated. It's because what I'm reading on this document is not my memory of many discussions that we had before we sent it back to the planning commission, and I know that you were stating certain things that potentially two of us or one of us at least wasn't in agreement with. And so I need to take some time to review my notes from those meetings.
I can appreciate that.
So I'll second your motion.
I just want to, I mean, we're going to need to make sure we give staff some clarity on where we're going. I don't know that we're even clear on what we want, but I don't have any problem delaying it, and I think it might be appropriate, given that there may not be full consensus here. I think we ought to make sure, I'm a fan of people aren't asking for regulation, we ought not place it there. There was, you know, and I said that before when I voted no against the overlay request to the planning commission, and since then, there's been a fairly robust set of comments and an informal petition that shows that there is at least some level of interest in zoning overlay, so that's fine. I think what I don't want to do is create a situation where this is the same as prohibiting wind and not just saying as such. So, and I think that was the road we were going down a year ago that Commissioner Sellers is trying to recall, I'm trying to recall, and if we're either going to allow it, reasonably allow it, or we ought to just ban it across the county like the staff said. So I tend to think there could be a place in Reno County that we could do this, and so I would hope we don't artificially create a barrier that's just there to prohibit it and the rest. I'd prefer, if that's one of your positions, you ought to just say as such, so we can just get to the point.
I agree, Commissioner Friesen, and that's why I made the motion to allow, or to give an opportunity for people to allow, to happen out in that area and have a voice. And so I agree with that. Further discussion? If not, roll call.
Commissioner Friesen.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst.
Yes.
We go to Planning Case Number 2021-14, a request to amend the jurisdiction of the official zoning district boundary map as identified in Article 1-103 of the zoning regulations. Is that...
So, yeah, this is quite simply adding the commercial wind zoning district to the rest of the county. Included in your packet was a map of the full county. Everything that is highlighted in blue would be zone commercial wind. Everything that's in the greens is the current zoned area of the county. Staff and the planning commission recommended approval of this. However, given the light that the regulations haven't been adopted, I would throw off the suggestion that maybe this item should be tabled. If you would adopt this, then the current regulations on the books right now would be the one that would be applicable to this area right now. I would suggest you only be tabling this, and then once the wind regulations are adopted, then you can bring this off of the table and adopt this at the same time. You do have the fact that, yeah, the moratorium is still in place right now until March 15th, I believe it is, but it might be better to adopt the regulations and then give us the will of the commission to expand the zoning. Right now, under the previous case, you've created the C-WAX zoning district out there, but that doesn't matter right now, and I would say that just because right now we have the FRD or the Flood Retardation Dam zoning district on the books right now. We don't have any properties right now that are zoned that, so it doesn't really hurt anything right now that we have a C-WAX zoning district where there's not a property out there right now that is zoned C-WAX. And so it's, it'll just sit on the books right now until such time as the wind regulations approved and this case would be potentially approved.
So... What does the commission desire on this?
I'd be happy to table it. I mean, I'd make the motion to table on staff's suggestion.
Corresponding with the regulations, bring it up on January 11th. Well, I would second that. Any discussion? All right, because staff made a very good point there. So, all right. Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Hirst.
Thank you.
Chairman, you promised me something.
Pardon?
You promised me something.
I didn't hear you.
To have a timeout after an hour and a half.
Yes. You would like that?
Yes, I would.
We went a little over.
Yeah.
So let's take about a five-minute recess. Let's start in at, let's take a seven or eight-minute recess. Let's start in at 5 till 11. How would that be, sir? Is that okay? Handling one item of business, and that would be that we never did vote on the proclamation of a state of local disaster emergency for Reno County, Kansas, because of that fire and the situations for seven days that will be coming up. So I would take, entertain a motion. So move, I would second it, to declare a state of local disaster emergency for Reno County, Kansas. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Friesen.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst.
Yes.
And then I was asked also, maybe it wouldn't hurt to clarify a little bit with regards to what we have just done concerning wind, and especially Randy and Daniel, please chime in here. Essentially, we have tabled the regulations for the unzoned areas... chime in here. Essentially, we have tabled the regulations for the unzoned areas that which would now become C-WEX zoned, in other words, zoned only for wind energy. And we have also tabled that request to amend the jurisdiction to create that until such time as, on January 11th, both of these will be taken up, and the regulations will be confirmed of what we desire, of what this commission desires, and that will also create the C-WEX district in the unzoned, presently unzoned areas. We did approve the request to prohibit commercial wind energy conversion systems in the presently zoned areas that are presently zoned today. Any questions? Please, please give us, one of the commission, a telephone call if you don't quite understand what was done. Okay? Anything else you'd like to add, Daniel?
No, I think most of the confusion occurred till we changed the comprehensive plan. We banned wind in zoned areas, and then I think the confusion started to occur in step three, which was we were talking about adopting new regulations for the areas we weren't going to ban wind, right?
Yes.
And then there was, you know, there was 2016 that's in effect today, and then a proposed 2019 that we, that was originally provided by the staff and Planning Commission that we were going to, that was the proposal on the table, right? 2019 original amendment to 2016. Is that correct?
It was the Planning Commission's, yes, from 2019, 2020, original recommendations for C-WEX regulations that would have been in the zoned areas. Now it's only applicable to the unzoned areas if you, when you adopt it, or if you adopt it.
That was, and we had started trying to amend it at the commission level. So we had so many meetings with that, I think we, I was a little confused myself as to what had happened, but it was never amended or changed by us. And so we had the original 2019 amendments from staff and planning commission to adopt today. Are we in agreement? Was that clear? Okay. I just thank you for clearing that up for us.
Sometimes we even get a little confused ourselves. So this is a way to get us out of being confused a little bit for next time. That's from me, anyway. I won't speak for Daniel or Ron. Mr. Sellers already agreed. Okay. Next on the agenda is the overview and recommendations of the 2021 wage study.
Good morning. I'm Helen Foster with Reno County Human Resources and the HR Director. Since January, we started working with Phil on a review of our job descriptions, as well as implementing some policy for a new performance evaluation system and a wage study. So here with us today is Phil Hayes from the Arnold Group, and he's going to present to you the results of the wage study.
Good morning, commissioners. Thank you for having me back. Hopefully, I'm not the longest agenda item today, but I am prepared to stand here with as much dialogue and questions as need be. So I am going to kind of run through and kind of highlight a few areas throughout my written report for your consideration. Obviously, the first couple pages is the note from the HR department, kind of the recommendations and how they dovetail with the outcome of this study. If you look at, have a 24-page document, page one, really just is a quick overview, but I do want to highlight kind of the second paragraph in the middle, that two things stand true across the board for any organization. And number one, people are the most important asset in any organization, and compensation is the most personal aspect of the employment relationship. So that's kind of the backdrop that we move forward. Certainly want to look at providing an opportunity for the organization, for the county, to manage their job classifications, distribute pay to employees in a manner that is fair, strategic, and competitive within a given market. So jumping into kind of the nuts and bolts here on page two, just as a, as the current wage market, or the inflationary times that we're in and the wage pressures that have developed throughout this year, but they're always present. I'll just say that it's never a good idea to allow an organization's compensation strategy to go stale. And quite honestly, that's probably the largest backdrop that we're fighting here with Reno County, operating off of a 2013 salary study that wasn't really adopted until 2015, and then additional time has passed and compounded the potential negative effects for the county as we've moved forward. So I will say too, you know, from an employee's perspective, an employer's perspective, 73% of employers think their employees are paid in a fair, in competitive manner, whereas 64%, and this is broad range, 64% of employees report that they feel that they're below market average. Technology has certainly influenced this, but when you factor those considerations against the time lapse that has occurred for Reno County specifically, the issues become very stark. So not only are we talking about compensation, but from the HR standpoint, from the practitioner's standpoint, there's a number of federal and state laws that we want to give consideration to and keep kind of front and center for us. Pay equity laws, Paycheck Fairness Act, the Fair Labor Standards Act, there's a number of governing components that we need to be mindful as we move forward. So I am a, just from a compensation standpoint, very methodical, scientific, want to utilize market data in a manner that supports proactive, fact-based decisions. So sitting in your seats, obviously, there's a big ask in front of you and a potential huge consideration set that's going to impact the entire county's workforce and ultimately taxpayers across the county as well. So when we think about market research, and I kind of hit on this last time I was in, I'm at the bottom of page two here. When we define the market and who we hire from and where we lose employees to, there's kind of three umbrellas that I look at. Number, or item 1A, the geographic market. This is largely the largest percentage of your workforce makeup. This is your entry-level and mid-level employees. They're driving in within a reasonable commuting distance. Item B is industry-specific or similar professional-related positions. And then item C would be more of the regional or national, depending on specialized skill sets or management or executive-related positions. I know there was some discussion in the work session about the various data sorts or data sets that we utilize, and I'm going to kind of break into those a little bit further. But my, my big component is we want data sets and data sources that are going to offer reliable data, especially if we don't want to lose ground, we don't want to become stale year after year or through a period of time. We've got a structure and a system set up that essentially we can hand off to the HR group here in Reno County that could potentially minimize the county's impact to engage with consultants to maintain a system, as long as it's maintained in a manner that's consistent with the application and how we went about the business this past year. So if we look at kind of the middle of page three here, you know, I will commend and compliment Reno County for really having a good formal compensation plan in place. I think it served the county well. I do think the county was, was put in a disadvantage when they took this, the deliverables on because they weren't well positioned to maintain job descriptions. They weren't positioned to score appropriately and objectively new positions that are introduced into the county. And that's one of the, kind of the bridges that we built is to provide the tools that Helen and her team can actually manage and maintain as we move forward with changes within the organization. So, but the formal policy, again, not having the appropriate tools to continue to maintain that, the staleness of that, though, has really compounded that. And so today, I'm going to present some, some rather large numbers for consideration, but there's, we'll also offer some, some recommended paths forward and how we can move forward as an organization. So, but if you look at kind of the top seven items here in the middle of page three, what we're looking for on a, on a good formal compensation plan and the administration of such is to ensure fairness and consistency within salary levels. So at the end of the day, we're looking at retention as well as morale and productivity. Certainly turnover has caused more consternation across different departments. You've got some that are just over inflating the budget with excess overtime because there's just not enough people to go around. So that's another consideration. I know we, we did look at that, the amount of overtime that it's costing the county could potentially be offset with an updated salary survey to be more competitive, to attract newer entry-level talent, to take off some of that burden of the existing employees. Number two, help the ensure, help ensure that the organization is competitive within the talent marketplace by keeping an eye on those external benchmarks to ensure that we're not losing position, or if it is, it's a known position and it makes sense for us to do so. Item four, straightforward means to differentiate wages for different roles requiring different expertise, experience, and/or education. Item five, encouraging employees to stay because they do not feel the need to lead the organization simply to get a pay raise. And that's largely what's going on right now. The, I think in September, there was 4.4 resignations, and there were 6.5, 4.4 million resignations nationally and 6.5 new hires. So largely employers are trading employees, but employees are doing so in a manner that they feel like the only option to go get ahead of the game, so to speak, to get an increase, is to go to an outside organization and trade jobs because they feel like that's their only negotiation within that. Item six is to help shield against claims of discrimination. So we certainly want to keep, again, our eye on the fair pay standards as well as the legal aspects and ramifications as an outcome of this study. And really, from an organization's standpoint, from the HR position or your overall competitive position, really, you answer one question. Do we want to lead the market, lag the market, or play par? Those were kind of the large three choices that organizations have. And I think as technology and jobs and the market continues to evolve, there's a fourth one, the mixed market position based on key positions or very specified positions. So obviously, as a county organization, you rely upon tax dollars. I don't know that the prudent decision is to lead the market, but when you play a laggard in such a manner that it's uncompetitive to attract new talent, to fill job openings, and it begins to really cause additional strain on retention, then I think we really need to reevaluate our position of where we are and understand the pros and cons with each of those. So, you know, one thing that I heard in talking to a lot of the department heads, electeds as well, is it was great that the plan was adopted in 2015. Kind of the disadvantage of that is the plan was not maintained, and that's been felt through and through for a number of years here and has really gained excess attention, I think, from the department heads and the feedback that they get from their staff members, is not having a plan that was maintained has really put them at a disadvantage in the broader marketplace. So. On pages four, five, and six, I get into some definitions. I'm not going to bore you with those. We talked about some green circles. Those would be under the minimum. The red circle would be over the maximum. But I do want to just draw attention that things that we draw consideration to, large consideration, is the equity position. That's individual equity as well as internal equity and the external equity component and how compensation unfolds for an organization. On the bottom of page five gets into the point factor analysis. There were nine scored compensable factors that we evaluated each position against. So that's just a quick summary of those nine areas. And wage compression, this is probably one of the larger components that the county is grappling with now is the wage compression, and this occurs when new employees are hired at a rate of pay greater than those that are earned by incumbents for similar skill, education, and experience. For a lot of your department heads, for them to be at a competitive position, they would need to outpace those employees that have kind of proven their, their worth, that have carried the water and that they know what they're doing. So that's a little bit unfair, or a lot of it unfair, to your existing staff. And the county's position is we can hire up to six grades above the minimum, but by doing so, that compounds a problem worse, and a lot of the department heads understand that that option is there, but it actually creates probably multiple headaches downstream from them if they were to bring additional talent on because the overall scale has not kept pace with the broader market. I'm going to pause before we jump into the data set for Reno County, just to see if there's questions or comments on kind of the opening background information.
I have none. I don't have any.
Okay. So at the top of page seven, just, this has kind of been a moving target, and we've updated the data set as we've kind of migrated through the year, drew a line in the scenes, we could prep this final document for consideration today. So this data set is as of November 30th of last month. And again, as I stated, unfortunately, the current compensation system is outdated, it's stale, and it's negatively impacting the county's employee recruiting and retention efforts. So when we dive into kind of the background information, the gender summary split there at the bottom of page seven and going over to page eight, really looking at your tenure and your age. And so if you look at the top of page eight here, your employee tenure within the county, and this data set, that 209, does include your current openings as of November 30th. So you would have just a hair over 50% of the workforce if all your positions were filled as of November 30th, would be less than four years of service with the county. If you go down to the, actually stay on that chart there if you could, Randy, there's 97 employees that will have less than a year of service with the county, so roughly 23, a little over 23%. On the right side of this chart, we've got 23 employees between 20 and 24 years of service and 19 additional employees with 25 years of service. And when you couple those numbers, so what is that, roughly 42, with the age band on the next chart down on the right side, we've got 34 employees that are north of 65 years of age plus years of service, just from the ability to qualify for retirement from the full vesting schedule. There's a fair amount of continuity and knowledge and experience and expertise that has the ability to potentially put retirement papers in between now and who knows when. So this, this problem potentially compounds itself furthermore if we're unable to competitively attract new talent or the right talent with the skills and experience. On page nine, just kind of looking at the key findings, my takeaways and observations. Item 1A, classifications matter because they ultimately drive compensation, ensure pay fairness, and create simple, clear career paths. So there's a lot of moving parts with any formal compensation plan. But I do want to draw attention on item 1A, item two. Some employees have experienced differing levels of pay compression compared to their counterparts. I mean, the numbers are just the, the numbers. So I do want to highlight that the market conditions have obviously changed considerably since 2013, and there are noted differences between the current system that the county utilized versus the proposed methodology and compensation plan that we're offering today. So the Arnold Group, we, throughout the study, ended up reorganizing the job classifications, ultimately just trying to rationalize and professionalize and streamline our approach and how we score out positions. So item three, I would say county pay is uncompetitive overall with the market as a whole. This study revealed some challenges that in maintaining your workforce and remaining competitive with pay, we've got some pretty high hurdles in front of us. Years of experience, while a market study is going to compare pay rates or ranges for each kind of job with similar positions within the geographic area. So we've looked at not only the salary surveys, but also some market study here to understand the full impact and the components that we're wrestling with. So if you look into item five here, this is really when we start kind of breaking down and quantifying some, some data. There's 60 employees, so nearly 16% of Reno There's 60 employees, so nearly 16% of Reno County's 377. These are actually Reno County employees, it doesn't count the open positions. But they've been employed with the county for less than a year, and 119 or nearly 32% have been employed with the county for less than four years. So there's 40 employees that have been with the county for more than 20 years as a whole. And the employee tenure with Reno County, when you look at overall tenure, we're just a hair over eight years total. If you look at positional tenure based on the current jobs that, that your incumbents hold, you have about a four and a half year positional tenure average across the county. Item six, there's currently 60 employees with one or less years of total tenure, which averages about just a little under 20% under market hiring rate. Following as a breakdown of these, we've got five employees that are of those 60, five of those 60 are above the targeted tenure calculations by an average hourly rate of 73 cents an hour. Of that 60 though, 55 of them are nearly the, the full majority are under targeted tenure calculations by an average of $1.70.
Are you seeing as the population, you know, whole United States continues to age wise up, are you seeing a little more of this less tenure and, and more retirements?
Well, that, that's been, yeah, to answer your question, since the onset of the COVID pandemic, as since February of last year, the latest number I've seen, and it's been a few, few months back now, nearly 1.8 million retirees. And so people are at a position that they could kind of check the box, I'm going to retire, that the strain and the wear and tear of it is not worth that moving forward. And they had the option to kind of punch their ticket, maybe a little bit prematurely from when they originally wanted, but that's, that's one consideration strain that, that is impacting the overall broader picture, yes. Item seven, the data clearly illustrates that there's inconsistency in the, the salary administration compression. And I want to caution and caveat this, that some of this language is based on the different methodology from the study you adopted versus the, the hay methodology that we're utilizing. And so there are, there are going to be differences. But at the middle of page, or item seven there, the marked differences, again, what we're after is to create some methodology and separation for not only those newer employees, but then also to take care of your tenured employees that have then been here, paid their dues, and will continue to represent and do the business of the, of the county. Any organization ultimately wants to hire and retain high performers and keep them engaged and loyal to their organization, but when you have a compensation plan that works against that, it puts the organization kind of in a tenable, intenable position because it's, it's difficult to compete with, with factors that are out of your control. So largely what we're looking at here are understanding that our system is maybe outdated. Can we get it to a new place that's going to be more competitive? And I'm not going to say it's the most competitive. If, if I were being honest, I probably would have lifted some levers a little bit higher and presented a bigger number, but certainly trying to balance the, the ability to implement and bite off something that, that is potentially doable, but also sustainable as you move forward. So I would venture to say the department heads that are behind me and may be watching on screen were at the table with me, arm wrestling and fighting for more. And I applaud your leadership group because they're fighting for their employees. And so I'm trying to balance kind of the realities of your seat, their seats and, and where we go. If you look at page 10, item eight, so this really starts breaking down the employees, another kind of grouping of employees. We have 104 employees with one or less years of service with positional tenure, roughly sitting at about 10% under the prescribed market minimum that the data tells us we would, we would likely be looking at. Of those 104, there's 80 employees or nearly 77% that are under the target, targeted positional tenure calculation by an average of nearly $2.80 an hour. This is countywide. If we break that 80 employee segment down, there's, there's 17. You'll see that I draw a distinction between the, the genders here, but there's 17 that are significantly below the competitive rate by an average of 47%. There's 41 that are below by an average of about 15 plus percent, and there's 22 that are slightly below to the tune of about 5.3% where the, where the data says they would be aligned. There's 24 of those 104 that are currently above the, the targeted positional tenure by an average of nearly $2 an hour. Of those 24, nine are slightly above by about 4%, eight are above by almost 16%, and eight of them are significantly above by about 46%. The, item nine, there's one employee that's been identified as, as a red circled employer that would be over the prescribed maximum level, but there's a super majority of employees countywide that are below their identified minimum. So the 104 that we just talked about are newer employees with less than one year of positional tenure. If we look at just countywide, we've got that one employee with a little over 22 years of experience, slightly above the maximum, but conversely, we have 188 employees with an average positional tenure approaching two and a half years, 2.3 years, that are roughly 18% under kind of the positional target range that they would align with. So kind of first recommendation here at a minimum, I, I would recommend that the county would develop a plan to elevate pay for all 188 green circled employees to their respective salary grade minimums. If you take that initial bite, that's going to have a price tag of $512,000. Annualized amount between those 188 employees is on average $2,727. The largest annualized amount for one of those 188 is, it's a 20, nearly a $25,000 swing. The smallest amount is $41. So I don't want to mislead and say everybody's going to get the $2,700. There's some employees that have been more severely impacted due to compression than others throughout the organization. Moving on to the next page 11, this is, I'm going to present a summary of the county's workforce as it pertains to wage compression and the costs associated with that. So if you kind of look at this chart here, and I'm going to, I, hindsight's always 2020, I always kind of label these A, A through whatever, or one through eight. But if you look at that first green line, the positional tenure experience with wage penetration sitting at 0%, this is 170, 175 employees, average tenure 2.12, there's the $512,000 in the impact. So that's just the fix to get those 175 employees. And I think the difference on those 13 from the 188 is open positions. But this would be $512,000 just to get people introduced into the new pay scale as, as we'll be presenting. When you look at the next line down, the 10%, just to give you some background on this, the 227 employees, this line, as we go down this chart, it counts or it incorporates the previous line. So this 227 incorporates those 175. At a minimum, we, we've got to get them into the green, but once we bite off 10% compression, our total look is 227 employees with two, nearly three years of positional tenure, and the total value, the total cost would be $820,000. If you go to the far right column in yellow, that 307,000, that's the difference of the green circled and the true additional cost for the 10% compression. Looking at the, the next subchart, I couldn't put all this on one, on one linear table, but if you look at the, the green line here, 0%, 175 employees, of those 175, there's 111 male employees, 64 female, and there's 79 of those 175 that are over the age of 40. And I would say kind of just where, where we live in the Midwest, if a wage and hour auditor came in, or if they're chasing down a pay discrimination claim, gender and age discrimination are typically going to be the, the two high level or the low hanging proof that an auditor would likely come in and look at. Additionally, there's 16 departments of the 18 that are impacted that have green circled employees impacted. You'll see if we buy up to the 30% compression rate, we're looking at 282 employees, but eight, all 18 employees, departments then have employees that are impacted by compression. And so just because a question does come up, when, when we're thinking about compression, it's not saying that we're going to take everybody to the 50th percentile of their grade. What we're looking at is positional tenure, how long they have been, if, if we've got the PFA done, we've scored the jobs appropriately, we've got benchmark surveys done, we've got appropriate pay scales aligned with knowledge, skills, and abilities tied for the role that they're in, we have to have that baseline set first, and then we're going to look at individuals and ultimately departments as a whole, but individuals from how long they've been in their current role. Because if we've got their current role aligned right with the pay scale, then we're going to start looking at positional tenure. So even though we have, say, a 50% compression threshold, if you scroll up just a little, Randy, go back up, there we go, that 50%, we're at 297 employees there. We have, I think, 400, or 377 heads as of, in the workforce as of November 30th, but with the open billits, open positions, not everybody's going to go to that 50%. Some people have a, we, we look at either the natural resting place based on how long they've been in their role. So maybe somebody's compression pitcher is 7.69%. They wouldn't be included in the green line or the 0% compression, but they would be included in the 10%, but they're naturally going to stop at that 7.69% based on their job grade, their positional tenure. We're not going to just uncap it. So essentially, each employee within the county has two kind of stops that we look at, their natural resting compression place or the artificial cap, the lid that we would be putting on at the 10 through 100 position. Does that make sense? If we scroll down to the second table here, just a, a couple of distinctions, if you look at the 30% line, you'll see here that 18 departments. So I, again, trying to look at consistency and the, the true impact of this, at the onset of this, and working with Helen and Randy, I have, I have seen other counties specifically that I've worked with, that kind of nestle in, and your, your compression buy-in line really kind of presents itself. And the best advice that I had, kind of the middle part or middle stages of this project is, most counties kind of range in anywhere from that 40 to 60%. But I said, that's just off of historical projects that I've done. So kind of looking at the line in the sand, if you go to the 50th and the 60th percentile, you'll notice that we add three additional employees, so 171 employees versus 174. No additional gender liability exists there, but we do take on those three additional employees are over the age of 40. So if you keep combing down, kind of the, the line in the sand that presents itself from my perspective or from an auditor's perspective would be the 90th percentile compression, because 308 employees total is the same for 90th percentile versus 100th percentile. We don't gain any additional liability as a whole, whether it breaks down by gender, age, or potential department. So then if we scroll up to the top chart there, 90th percentile, that total ask then to, to really kind of fill your, your full exposure out is $1.9 million, about the fourth column over. That includes your green circled employees, but also redistributes and balances employees based on their positional tenure and the compressed position that they uniquely represented. So as you look at those tables there, I'm just going to kind of hit a high point, a couple of high points from the bottom of page 11 here. Beyond correcting your green circled employees because that's certainly strongly recommended, but then we still have known compression issues for 308 employees as a whole. If we only bought off the green circled employees, that's just going to further compound your compression because you'll likely have 175 employees that are going to be elevating up, and it's going to cause additional compression against existing staff and tenure, which is going to create additional morale and productivity concerns for your, your department leaders. So again, the, the 90% compression level is the first opportunity to fully mitigate the county's known liability, as this is the level in which no additional employees are negatively impacted as it relates to protected classes, gender, or age. By adopting the 90% level of compression, the county fully mitigates its known risks and liability from this project. However, there will be 18 employees that will still, still be impacted by some level of pay compression. So just to drive that home, the same 300, 308 employees are included in the 100 and the 90% level. The 100% level simply allocates and distributes an additional $53,361 across those 18 employees to fully mitigate their, their full compression. Obviously, looking at your budgets and the other considerations that you're charged with, if the 90% level of compression is not addressed this year, the Arnold Group would strongly recommend that the county identify a plan to address that compensation at least up to the 90% level of compression in a subsequent year. And when I say subsequent year, I think timeliness is certainly an important consideration because the data as it presents here is stamped from the 2020 compression or wage compensation plan. So I would look at either the, the following year or within two years maximum. We, we do offer a potential path forward, and we're going to get to that on page 22, just to kind of help break down some of those options and kind of the impact of COLA increases, et cetera, as we move forward. But on page 12, we present the 216 position descriptions that is the outcome of our project. And I do want to just say on record, the methodology difference, the, the structure of which we're migrating from, the county had 30 job grades historically from the 2015 plan that was adopted. The hay methodology that we've utilized for more than two decades has 15 job grades. And I always get pressured on, why can't, can we introduce a job grade 16 or introduce another one? And because of the PFA and the nature of how you score positions and the job conversion table, we have 15 job grades. Now, we get into an S designation for specified positions. We'll break down, so if you actually look at page 13, this is the first introduction of the specified positions. As this pro, as this project was unfolding, the S designations presented a very, very strong case in the law enforcement component for the county, for your jailers as well as your deputies, first responders. But within public works and, and the, the equipment operators, specifically at the three level, there was, the data supports this. So again, these positions score as a job grade 15, we're just adding an S designation for specified in that nature. So you'll see those S's sprinkled throughout page 15, actually 16. And then on the bottom of page 16 is the pay scales that we are proposing. So you'll see the job grades 10 through 15, 30 through 35, and 40 through 42, and then for the specified job grades. And the primary difference here is we have a variable multiplier on this. So they still score out as a job grade X, but we have a 5% multiplier. So they score as a job grade 15, there's a 5% differentiation there to allocate for some of the concerns that exist with, with these positions.
I missed how you got to your S numbers.
That was just through the data and some positions with largely the law enforcement community, and this is pretty prominent in a lot of the counties that, that we do work with. Prior to COVID, I think the law enforcement community has kind of had a lot of negative national noise in the media and so forth, and recruiting has been a struggle, retention has really magnified over the last handful of years. So this is a So this is a manner, a solution, I guess, that, that offers a path that we can differentiate objectively on why there's, why there's a differentiation. Some counties, some organizations would just have a separate differential or they would allocate X dollars. This keeps and preserves your framework with the, the hay methodology and the point factor analysis to say, when we score this position, it inherently earns the job grade. But we can apply the same methodology, X variable multiplier for any S designated positions within the county. And I think this is, so when I talk about an earlier chart on the lead lag or play par with the market, the mixed market position, this would be a mixed market position or posture for the county as it relates to law enforcement, first responders, as well as some key considerations with the, the CDL requirements that's imposing additional constraints on public works. There's just not enough CDL certifications out and about in the, in the public space and it makes competing from that limited talent pool. So that's, that's how we derived.
Well, okay, I don't understand because you mentioned that your hay method has less numbers involved to start with, but it really doesn't because you're using these Ss.
Correct. Well, we have, we truly have 15 grades that score out and I want to maintain the integrity of, of the PFA process. So the S designation really comes down to understanding, do we have pain points within the county or within an organization that say this is inhibiting our operations? It's no different than, I think in, in public works, there's a crane certification that offers a $2 differential for somebody holding that. This is looking at your turnover data and where the turnover is coming from. I certainly wouldn't want to be in the, the position of really, quite frankly, any sheriff across the counties in Kansas, because the turnover impact in the sheriff's departments are, quite frankly, a little bit unsustainable. And it causes additional considerations that prevent us from either promoting up because we don't have enough people to go around. So that's the logic behind it, is maintaining the integrity of the 15 job grades, but still outlining a plan that isn't going to pick winners and losers by individuals, but it's going to be by positions from the pain points that are illustrated from the turnover.
Help me understand the relationship between mid, men, mid and max on job grades and your total compression numbers. So, you know, does that affect the one, say you go 100%, does that affect the 1.9? Does it raise it?
No, the 1.9 million is a result of adopting this pay scale. So job grade 11 is actually the lowest job grade that we score out. So we've got some custodial staff, general labors and the Cook score in a job grade 11. Currently, the entry level for those positions, and I don't have it off the top of my head, Helen.
1035.
1035. So we are proposing that $12 would become the entry level wage for those positions. And so there's a $1.70 differentiation and that's ultimately the compression picture. It starts at the bottom. So the minimum would be the entry level rate. The midpoint is the middle of, between the men and the max. And how we, how we identify this is looking at our benchmark positions. We benchmark positions and then we cascade our progressions as well as our spreads for each of these. But everything is tied together and it's married up, so.
Some people at the entry level would start at 12, depending upon length of service?
Length of tenure, positional tenure.
Could go to the mid to the max, is that what you're saying?
Over the course, and I think this is on a, if we were to look at the overall impact, if you were to look at a 3%, with that 3% being some kind of combination between a COLA adjustment annual, let's say a 1% COLA, and then allocate a 2% for performance, whether it's pay for performance or a merit-based system, but tie it to evaluations, a 3% will get you from the men to the max over the course of 20 years.
Okay, thanks.
But you, that adding in a COLA adjustment to maintain this is to ensure that we don't lose position and our data becomes aged at eight years and every, once a decade, we're, we're asking for a $2 million adjustment. We're going to try to migrate this as we go. But I, yeah, the 20 years is kind of the time span that if, if people progressed in a basic math formula, I guess, that, so. Other questions on the proposed scales? So on, on page 17, item 2A, we'd recommend going to market at least every few years. This, this, I think, has the balance within the organization, I would say one to three years. But realistically, if, if you have a good system, the deliverables that we're going to provide, the HR department here, we could actually just look at the Midwest CPI index and age our data naturally and maybe we could artificially put a cap that the county is going to adopt a COLA adjustment once a year, once every two years. And we're going to look back maybe three of the last completed calendar years to help us influence that. I don't think there's any organization that could bite off the 6.8 or the 7.3% inflation rate that we're, we're likely to conclude this year with. But can you put parameters that say we'll commit to a COLA adjustment of some sort? It's going to help mitigate this and allow the scale to grow with you. But by going to market on a regular and scheduled basis, the county will benefit from an overall, overall financial impact is going to be minimized rather than going through this exercise once a decade. Employee value proposition strengthens, the succession planning process is improved. You're able to grow your talent and backfill your, your positions. And then the county is better situated to lessen the impact of avoidable turnover. And I know we had some conversation that, my, my professional opinion as an HR practitioner, some turnover is good turnover. And my philosophy is, is I either manage out or up my bottom 10 to 20%. But it just comes back to expectation. But if the avoidable turnover is, if it's within our power to maintain a competitive pay scale, we're not asking employees to go knock on the neighbor's door to get a pay increase and change employers to do so. And I would say your newer employees, your less tenured employees probably have a bigger appetite to do that because they're not nearly as vested in the retirement system as your tenured folks are. When we look at the salary surveys and the data sets that we utilized, we, we bring in the US, but that, the, the impact of the US data point is mitigated based on the influence of largely the Kansas data that we bring in. So we look at the state as a whole, which has metros. We look at Reno County and then we brought in local area too, which broadly is the left two thirds of the state of Kansas. And then we did factor back in the, the non-metro areas of the eastern portion of the state as well. So this gives us a pretty good flavor, it's heavily influenced with Kansas as a whole. And I think it's pretty reflective with this. When we look at our, the turnover data analysis on the bottom of page 17, over the course of five years from 2017 through November 30th of 21, we had 353 employees depart the county and this does not include elected officials, nor does it include standby employees or temporary employees. So we had a little over 33% of the employees with less than one year of service. If we look at those with less than four years of service, it's pushing 68%. So on the next page, we just break down, we just cut one year off at a time. So the, the top is from 2018 through 21, you can kind of wheel down through here. What's interesting is if you look at the turnover as an impact from a five-year whittling down to a single year with less than one year of service, the, the rates go from 33% to 34% to 37%. 41 and a quarter percent and 40 and a quarter percent through 11 months. And we're not, you know, through December, I've not gotten an update from Helen through the first half of this month. But my guess is 2021 is going to continue with the trend that we're losing position. We're, we're turning more people over with less than a year of service. And when you start factoring in the retirements potentially that are within, within the horizon and not being able to front load good solid talent that's going to want to stick with us and actually kind of get through the employee pipeline, our numbers are likely to get even more lopsided as, as we continue. So on page 19, this is where we get into kind of the turnover, the cost or the impact of it. And I will just say voluntary turnover has a negative impact across the board on employee morale, productivity and ultimately on the bottom line. You know, there, SHRM National, the Society for Human Resource Management estimates that it, turnover cost is roughly six to nine months of an employee's first year salary. So if you think about an employee making $40,000 a year, that's $20,000 to $30,000 in turnover cost for that one position. The Center for American Progress uses a little bit more of a conservative number, an average, 16% of annual salary for jobs under $30,000 a year or 20% of salaries for jobs that are $30,000 to $50,000 a year. And then those that are more specialized or higher salaried, they estimate 213%, which I did not use in any of our calculations. But if you look at the bottom of this page, the factors that go into, and it really gets difficult to quantify, but the cost of hiring a new employee, the advertising, sourcing, interviewing, screening, the hiring, onboarding, the training and the management's time of that, lost productivity. Some estimate it takes a new employee one to two years to reach productivity levels to an existing or exiting employee. Lost engagement, the impact that it has on other employees. Customer service and errors, training costs, cultural impact overall. So there's a lot that comes into play here. If you go to the top of the next page, kind of looking at the, the cost outcome or impact, top down is that five-year, four-year look, et cetera. Breaking out your positions under $30,000, I basically froze employees based on tenure when they left and salary when they left. We had 108 employees over the last five years that were under $30,000. Five-year cost, $430,000. 245 employees that were north of $30,000 a year, that cost is a little over $2 million. When you combine them both, it's $2.5 million. If you break it down and just look at the bottom line in this table, this is the, only the 11 months in 2021 that you could tie a price tag of $664,000 on the cost of turnover. And this is just kind of looking at peanut butter costing where we're just spreading it out because we don't have a good method to analyze every nuanced cost. So we're just utilizing the Americans for, or Center for American Progress, their conservative estimates and how that impacts with the county. Next page 21 is, is the recommendations that the Arnold Group would, would offer the county for consideration. Item number one, regardless of the outcome of what is adopted, there will be some additional work for Helen and her team to update any of the policy, personnel policies or handbook to reflect the updated parameters as an outcome of what's adopted. Item two, formalize and adopt a compensation policy, practice and formal plan to include the county's commitment to maintain the current market or a pay scale. This was a very consistent kind of threat that I'd heard in meeting with the department heads is, the plan was great, we finally adopted it something in 15, but we didn't maintain it. And we've lost position day after day and year after year since then. And the, the current events and the wage pressures, it's just completely magnified this. 2A, defining parameters for promotions, vertical promotions, horizontal, but also transfers and demotions. Item B, I spoke to this a little bit, commit to an annual pay increase, at least with some sort of COLA adjustment. This will maintain that, that process. I'm also one that if I'm writing policies, I don't like to back myself into a corner. I would give myself an out that if the bottom of the economy falls out and we're in the worst recession ever, can we hit the pause button on it? But then, once the recession is technically closed and we move forward, the tough thing is, is recessions affect county government and municipalities far different than it does private employers because the work of the county has to go on. And really, headcount by and large is much more stable in a county organization. You're not dependent on widget counts and sales and so forth. So beyond the COLA impact, I would certainly look at defining a, a pay for performance component or a merit increase component that you can really start communicating to your higher performers. I, I offer, this is also going to help external equity remain balanced and competitive as time passes on. But item B2 there, the COLA performance increase. If you were to look at doing a, a 1% on an annualized basis and say, we're going to meet COLA, but we're going to cap it at 1%. So historically, before the pandemic hit, the US was running at a percent and a half inflation. If you look at the Midwest Plains region, it was slightly under that. So you could tie some sort of metric, but also put an artificial cap on it that's not going to put the county in a position that COLA is going to blow the budget up. So if you couple a COLA impact as well as a pay for performance, say 2%, how these numbers play out, 1% of, if we owned 100% of the compression, 1% would be $185,000 for the county from a sustainability look. If you did a 2% combo between the two, it's $370,000. If you did 1% plus a 2% performance piece, I think you're looking at about a little over $0.5 million. So just to give you some numbers. Item C there, I would certainly maintain the, the pay differential that's in play for the crane certifications. That's critical for your, your building bridges throughout the county and to service those in the appropriate manner. Currently a $2 differential paid there. If that certification lapses, then that gets a bit of a. I would also offer or give consideration for additional pay differentials for a Class A CDL. Limited number of Class A CDLs. Public Works and their ability to kind of handle projects simultaneously. My, my perspective, just as a taxpayer, there's inefficiencies being caused by not having some sort of allocation where we can attract maybe additional Class A CDL holders. From the sheriff's, in the sheriff's office and youth services, I would strongly encourage a shift differential for, for off-shift work. And there's a number of ways you can go about it. I think it should be meaningful. A dollar an hour certainly is in line with, I would say, averages across the board. You know, there was some early conversation that we could tie it as a percentage of starting salaries or starting pay ranges, but as that scale migrates up, that is inherently already taking care of that. And here, this will at least give a differential in a static manner similar to what the county is already doing with the crane certifications. Next, I would centralize the creation and or modification of job descriptions and have HR adopt the, the point factor and analysis methodology because that allows the county, county to remain objective, not only for new positions, but as jobs change, these can be scored differently. I don't know how many times I repeated it in my department meetings, is the quantity in a job description is not as important as the quality of the types of duties, et cetera, that are, that are captured in there. So by having a, an objective formal system in place, it allows objectivity to be maintained as you move forward and slot jobs and new jobs or as positions increase or decrease in-house, you can realign them more appropriately. So again, the deliverables will be handed off to Reno County HR to provide, provide them with those tools to maintain this as you go and ultimately save costs from having to engage with outfits like the Arnold Group or others at a regular or in a, in irregular basis. So number three, address those green circled employees, elevate those to at least the defined grade minimum. Item four, address the positional wage penetration and the disparities and the compression that's eliminated here. If you go to the next page, I offered just kind of some numbers for consideration in kind of a step, stepping process here. So scenario one outlines departmental pay and I'm looking at base pay and working out of class or differentials and longevity pay. I know longevity pay was kind of sunsetted years ago, but there's a small percentage of long-term employees that still receive longevity pay. And quite honestly, what I And quite honestly, what I had heard from department heads is for employees in my department that do get longevity pay, at least we have something that we can say thank you if they step up to what that differential is. But a lot of, a lot of the newer employees don't have that luxury. So I think just adopting a formal scale is going to, will help you mitigate or migrate out of that longevity pay as you completely sunset and those employees ultimately retire. But you can see the base pay impact, 16.4 million. You're working out of class and differentials, 116,000, and then the total pay is 16.5 for the county on your existing headcount as of November 30th. So if we take those base numbers and if you consider the 2% COLA increase that is being requested by the HR department to be reflected in the first pay cycle for January of '22, your base pay increases to 16.7 million, differentials stay the same, total pay is at 16.8. There's a difference of just a hair under $300,000 if everyone receives a 2% COLA. Why that's important is not every employee is going to be impacted by compression. And so the 2% COLA increase allows us to say, we appreciate your contributions, we recognize the impact of the current market conditions. And so there's going to be nearly 100 employees that would receive only a COLA increase, but not a differential. The COLA increase also feeds into your liability position with your green circled employees as well as your compression positions. So if you were to opt in for the 100% compression as kind of step three in this, and I would differentiate these, I would give some time, 30 days minimum, likely get through a couple pay cycles. You can see then, base pay jumps to 18.5 million, differentials stay the same, total pay 18, little under 18.6 million, but a difference from the COLA increase of $1.7 million. So we're right at that $2 million to kind of cover the overall impact that you bought off on the 100% compression. Looking at page 23, maintaining a competitive salary structure, and I think this is about the seventh time I've hit on this, but if you can add some sort of maintenance component to this, I would say that communication piece goes a long way with your department heads as well as employees throughout the county, that they don't feel like they're absolutely losing position year after year. So remaining competitive in the market is key to attract and retain talent. By maintaining this, it's going to allow us to catch issues before they become large enough to affect employee engagement and the organization's ability to attract and retain that talent. Salary structure issues are less expensive to address early on without compounding the impact of time, which is what we're grappling with today. So, and if we were to go a step further, I think having HR really look at the turnover analysis to identify your pain positions because that, that's really going to spotlight whether we need to turn off a mixed market position or turn on a new mixed market position to combat some of those known issues that maybe the system as a whole will not address effectively. So the differentials that we talked about are just one example of that. The other piece that I would offer for consideration, and I know there's a lot of positive feedback from department heads, it's kind of this, and even HR, is kind of the grow slash build buy-up methodology. And so this kind of pairs with supervisors can kind of go up six steps in onboarding new talent, but right now there's a huge reservation to do that because it compounds additional compression. But some organizations, this provides us a matrix to say, okay, if we have somebody with X number of years of external transferable, relevant, valid experience that we're hiring for, can we give them 50% credit? Because we don't want to diminish the talent that we're growing here so they get moved throughout the pay system as we move forward. But the external talent, if somebody had 10 years of experience in the external marketplace, you could buy back and land in column five if they're a job grade 15. Instead of having to onboard that talent and have a conversation to bring them on at 16, 20 an hour, with 10 years external experience giving them credit for five of that, we could be closer to $19 an hour and still probably not be overpaying for that talent. But we're also going to maintain and honor the value proposition that we've kept with our employees that have been here for their full 10 years. So this just gives us a different methodology to help us onboard talent. But I would just strongly caution you not to do something like this if you don't take care of your green circled and compression. If you don't take care of compression pieces, and I don't think this build-by model makes sense because you're going to have additional morale and negative consequences on your existing staff. So with that, I'm going to pause. Actually, I'm concluded. So if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to engage.
The numbers that you've given us today are wage payments, correct?
Correct, base pay.
So they do not cover employment costs such as federal withholding that the county has to pay?
Correct. Yeah, the, this is looking at base pay only, and largely you could say that's kind of from the employee's perspective. I think there's a fair amount of your employees that do understand that we're, it's county dollars, there's employer costs or matching dollars for, whether it's federal unemployment, state unemployment, work comp, you got benefit costs, et cetera, that are entwined with this as well.
What do we use in allocate percentage of 20, 25?
16 to 25, yeah. I mean, it depends on which, if you add health insurance, but just the taxes are probably around 20%.
Well, if you added health insurance, it'd be significantly.
Quite a bit higher.
But you think the employment costs are about 20%?
The employment, yeah, around 20%.
Have we used this on page 23 of 24, when he's talking about this buy-up? I can't imagine that we're not doing that now. We don't?
Well, that's where the step one and step six come, step one through step six come in to where somebody can bring them in between those steps.
So in general, that's being done at this point in time?
It is to some degree, but like you said, a lot of departments can't do that because of the compression piece. So they're bringing in somebody in that's making more than maybe a 10-year employee. So it's kind of, it's working against itself.
Because the system wasn't maintained?
Correct.
You presented an awful lot of data and it's kind of hard to absorb all of it. I think the three of us read it ahead of time and your explanations are good. I don't want to prolong the discussion, but I really think on employee turnover, that some discussion needs to be made in what we're seeing with younger employees today being willing to have six or eight jobs during their lifetime, where when I entered the job market, that number was probably two. Is, in fairness, is it that part of turnover?
And I'm going to estimate your age, I would say two to three for you. But now for entry, entry or new job inference, new job applicants or employees, that number's north of 38 jobs through the course of their lifetime. And what's happening is, and again, it comes back to, and there's a, I think employees by and large, and it's not just the newer, the younger generation, we do staffing and recruiting, we see it across the board. People are always looking for the next best thing.
Right. I think my point that, and we've got a bunch of department heads here, is no matter where we go to on this wage chart, in today's world, you're going to have significant employee turnover. And you've got to look for ways to keep that person interested in this career.
And to, yeah, I agree with you 1,000% because a lot of that burden falls on them as department leaders beyond the pay.
It doesn't fall on us commissioners, it doesn't fall on the county administrator, it falls on the department head to make that job meaningful to that employee.
Beyond, beyond that though, this is a large consideration set to attract and then retain who we do have. And I know anecdotally, there's been lots of stories shared with me under the county umbrella, but at the end of the day too, what can we do?
I'm not stating this point just to say that your data is not valid. I'm just saying that, that other things go into this longevity consideration besides base and incremental pay.
My study after study says people leave their jobs because of their supervisor more than anything else. And that's, that's tried and true for.
Yeah, I think you said that last time.
Also inclined to offer the idea that within, say, three months, that HR administration bring to the commission their recommendations as such things that occurred on page 21 of this article, which is the overall projects, next step for consideration, and to develop a matrix. That's kind of where I'm at on this. I don't mind stepping up and saying that. I think that sometime, if we go 50%, if we go 70%, have we really solved the issue? Are we just then next year going to do it again and do it again? We need to develop something? And I'm tight as anybody, but I just think at some point in time, we've spent too many years and we need to look at this. That's where I'm inclined to look at, those three items.
Where are we getting the money for this?
I think that, Ron, I don't disagree with what you just stated. And Commissioner Friesen just indicated, where are we getting the money? And that's where I'd like to go back to the first page of this item here. Takes me a long time to get there on this.
Hey, Ron, you got a little deal on the side, you could go like this.
Yeah.
I heard that, or somebody told me that, and then I weigh all this space.
Okay, here I am. Okay. Consider actions to combat wage compression. And the county administrators put in here that we have a little over $1 million for pay increases in 2022 budgeted.
Budgeted 1 million, yeah, the 1,48,000 across all the funds, operating funds that have personnel on them.
And my concern is this statement going on, that I'd like some more discussion before we approve the 100% compression. Because yes, I agree that we can use some reserve cash. You've heard me talk about reserve cash for two years. But I think the big question here is the county administrator's got to have a plan to be able to pay for this three and four and five years out. The immediate future is payable, but when you increase wages to this extent, we don't have a plan going forward. That 5% decrease that we did on the mill levy this past year will be going up 10 mills a year. And I guess I'd like to have more discussion from the county administrator of how we pay for this long-term. And I'm not disagreeing with you about the need.
You bring a good point.
I am inclined to go ahead and approve the 2% and get that done. Not put this on the back burner, and that's not what I'm saying, but, but there's enough money under consideration here to distort the annual budget of the county significantly. Correct, Randy?
When you get three, four years out, maybe, the next couple of years, we have enough cash, we have some ARPA money that we can use. So we, the additional $800,000.
I agree with you, and I'm not.
The 1 million is already budgeted, so that's already in the process.
I understand.
For the next few years.
I don't know that I agree with you that ARPA funds are to be used for this, but we certainly could. But that's a, that's a one-time revenue situation. And what I'm concerned about is, is how we implement this on a long-term basis.
With the thought with the ARPA money, it'd be revenue loss money. Our understanding is once it goes into the general fund, it's ours to use for whatever we want.
I understand that.
So our cash would be built up and we would, as we budget each year in the future, we would have to watch what were our cash reserves, and it just adds to the cash reserve. So look at other spending to see if there are other areas to, as Commissioner Friesen's commented, be more efficient in other areas.
Well, I think that's got to be part of this process.
Perhaps what we could do is approve the cost of living, get that off the table. I'm, I'm in agreement that there's great merit into fixing our compression issues that we've caused over time. It's just, we have to pay for it, right? And so I would love to see a report from the administrator that shows the uses of funds and we look at it over a period of five years and, you know, whether he suggests using ARPA funds initially, cash reserves initially, the bottom line is eventually we'll, we'll have to be self-sustaining. And once we get to the 100%, it only goes up from there, right?
It'll keep building, yes, but also that 100% compression has, those numbers are based on everyone staying in that position. As people retire, some of those higher end, some of that goes away. So it's, and I don't know, Phil, it's kind of like a point in time number in a way, isn't it?
Correct, yeah. Over time, and I go back to the 40-plus employees that are within the horizon of retirement, those are going to be your larger wage earners. And if we deal with 100% compression, at some point as they approach retirement age, they cycle out and we start to scale again. We either bring in entry-level talent at the minimums, or if we do kind of the buyout, the buy-in option, it's a control mechanism to say, we're not going to go past step five. But it's, yeah, it's, but over time, as you have higher age work, higher wage earners retire, you're going to have people hopefully moving to their wage penetration journey as well. So your highs will fall off and it's going to be a moving target. Yeah, it's very fluid.
I don't ever, I don't know, it would go down, but it seems highly unlikely. I, I think it would be helpful to also, you know. If this was a private business conversation, you know, you would, you would have to raise revenue, right? And that's the one thing we don't want to do. It would be helpful, I think, to, if you could split out, Randy, I mean, we have departments that are fee-funded, departments that are, that are, that are mill levy funded, and to show, whether a loan firm, this, this has a projection to impact mill levy, whether long-term, we had a discussion this morning, and Registered Deeds, she has a dollar fee, increasing those fees by 20% doesn't seem like it would negatively impact the public and potentially be a way to raise revenue to solve this. But the other part I think that we need to bring from, you know, how a private business would look at this, is that we would, there would be some expectation that. look at this, is that we would, there would be some expectation that your leadership and department heads help solve this problem for us, too, whether it's, do we need all the staffing we have today? Do we need all the expenses we have today? I think it's a reasonable request back to you and the county department heads of, if we're being asked to spend potentially $2 million more a year, what can you do to help us get there?
Well, but if we agree that overhead costs are an extra 20%, we're talking about 2.4 million a year.
Oh, 2.5, I don't.
With all due respect, there's already 1 million of that budgeted, so maybe, so maybe 1.4 million. And Dan, Commissioner Friesen, you're right. What I'll look at is, some of the numbers that the Arnold Group has is all departments, all employees. There are some that are not funded by the mill levy. There are some that only get partial mill levies. So I'll have to break it out by the employees of what department they're in, what they're paid for, because it may not be a true $2 million for the mill levy. Because you have solid waste in there, then you have aging or a cat that may have other sources of money, same with youth services. So there's other departments that have other sources of revenue. Health Department, only a third of their budget is funded by the mill levy.
Do you think it's possible to get a mill levy neutral situation here?
Well, I mean, with the whole budget, I mean, the whole process, there's ways to budget different, or cut other costs.
Don't say something that you regret.
Yeah, that I can't make perform on, you know.
Well, I mean, I think that's one of the fundamental focuses overall for this group is to reduce county taxes where possible. And so this is setting us back substantially, which I don't disagree, it needs to be done. It's just, it's in conflict with one of my goals as a county commissioner in some ways. So.
Government can do three things. They can increase assets to meet ongoing costs. They can decrease services to meet ongoing costs. You can raise taxes and raise certain service costs, such as landfills, such as water, that type of thing. And I don't know of anything else besides those three things that government can do. Either increase assets, you decrease services, or you raise taxes. Have the same services.
I think there are ways to.
There's fees. There's fees.
Fees, and fees, yes, it's service.
I still think there are ways to increase efficiencies without, and decrease costs without necessarily decreasing services.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that the, we approve a scenario two, the 2021 payroll plus 2% COLA reflected on 11222, and that the county commission will make a final decision on how much of scenario three can be funded no later than the final meeting of January 2022.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved.
What scenarios are you, what page are you?
Page 22. Page 22. Long copy.
I've got it right here.
Yeah. It's probably such small type, you can't read it on that thing.
Randy, what do you think of that approach?
Well, I just want to clarify. So the scenario is the 2% COLA. Does it also adopt the new pay skills? Is that, or is that just kind of a given in that? Or is this just 2%?
I thought the new pay skills work with the compression. Don't they? Has to be decided yet.
They do. It's just as, I know directors have asked me, what do I hire people at now that may not be getting a raise at all next year? I guess we just wait, and they still hire in at the old pay skill.
If I can, before the official vote is cast, I use 1122 as a kind of a mile marker here. I would realign the resolution to piggyback off of your pace periods, so you don't compound a headache with HR.
Yeah, which this would actually go into effect on the first payroll of the new year, 1-7. So that's why we needed the approval today in order to get all of the.
Does that give you enough time to do that?
It does.
Enough time to do the 2%.
Yeah, for us to do this for payroll, yes, for our payroll on 1-7, to have the 2% increase.
My understanding of your motion, then, is to grant a 2% COLA, effective first paycheck in, effective 1-1. All right, that's correct?
No, it would even be before that, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because the pay periods, we actually have them starting in December for that January 7th payroll.
And that to make a final decision on any compression on January 20, the last meeting in January 22.
No, I said no later than.
No later than.
If we can get information for the first meeting, we might be able to cover it then.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know this was a very, very thorough review of the county's pay. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. Good work, Coach, and good presentation.
Stick with my 100% compression come January, okay?
Just find a way to pay for it.
What's the next item?
Okay, now we go to, we've got monthly, 2-day administrator report.
Are we going to break for lunch? Should we just hammer it through? Because we're going to have about 30-minute executive session also, so.
Either way, I've walked out the whole day. I think we're ahead of where I thought we would be at this point.
Will you want to go eat?
Sure.
Let's go eat.
Need better honor, help.
That's why you're grumpy, or what?
I'm not grumpy.
Oh, okay. Okay, let's recess for, for lunch, for an hour?
Yeah, thank you.
How about 1:15?
1:15?
Yeah.
Okay. Plumbers are still active. Call the meeting to order. County Administrator Report.
On the agenda, under my report, I have the monthly department reports, and based on conversations last meeting, last time the monthly reports were on here, now we're putting about half on each meeting. That way, instead of 18 departments at a time, you'll get half and half. So this month, or this meeting, you have aging, appraiser, automotive, county clerk, communications, community corrections, district attorney, emergency management, and the health department. Did anyone have any questions or thoughts on anything they read in the report?
No.
Okay.
Hirst has me signing things out.
I was trying to get.
Oh, yeah, my notes. Keep going on.
Okay. Financial report, again, this is similar to every month. Things are looking good with the money right now. I didn't find any departments or funds that are in trouble. This is through November pay. As a reminder, there's still, first couple of months of the next year, we'll still have 2021 expenses for encumbrances and other bills that come in that were actually 2021 bills. So it's not a, completely based on calendars. Any questions on the year-to-date budget report?
Yeah, Randy, I sent you a question yesterday that, to my knowledge, didn't get answered. The very last page of the budget, year-to-date budget report, has a beginning fund balance 14.9 million, ending fund balance 18.9.
Of the general fund, okay.
I think.
Yeah, that's reported.
Right there.
Okay.
Right there. Now, okay, the reason for that 4 million differential is that we've got one more month of expenses, or?
It's a combination of issues. One, our revenues are coming in good, taxes, the sales tax is coming in good, and at a higher, revenues are higher than the expenditures for the year. We do have more expenditures, like you just mentioned, that go into the next year, but most of our revenues for the year probably are already in. So that will come down.
Some.
That difference will go down.
But you expect to, you expect a cash balance carryover?
Yes. Any other questions on the financials? And as a reminder, the expense totals, when you look at year-to-date for the general fund, the expense shows 55% has been spent. That's, part of that is that cash balance that is put in there as a cushion. So there's 6 or 7 million that is placed in there that will not be spent. It's in for budget authority, but that's part of that cushion to carry over for the next budget year, in addition to what we collect more than what is spent this year. Any, some of the other funds, they're also in good condition. Aging's down a little bit, but they're funded primarily, a lot of their money comes from the state, federal and state government. Health Department, their balance is up quite a bit this year. They have a lot of grants coming in. Noxious weed is one that has gone down somewhat. Keep an eye on that one. Little Bridge, building up money for future bridge projects. And Public Works is another one that's in good condition. The ending fund balance is well above the beginning fund balance. But they're a lot like the general fund, there's some cushion, and we still have expenses that will be paid for the next few months for 2021. Let's see if I, the employee benefit fund, just to kind of point out from previous discussion this morning, when I mentioned the taxes, this is the fund that pays for the taxes on the wages. See, we're, this fund balance is also in good condition.
Is that 100% mill levy funded? So even, even a fee-based department's, like?
They reimburse. So I guess, so I guess I was incorrect. It's not a fully mill levy. When you see the reimbursements up here, that, some of the fee-based departments or other funding sources do pay back, or grants, if there's grants, health department maybe, for example, money comes back in here, so. There's any other special? Any other questions on the, or any questions on the financials? My next item is, at the November 30th commission meeting, there was a request for health department and staff to collaborate and discuss questions by, that Commissioner Friesen had asked regarding COVID issues, COVID policy, and the health department. So the health department, legal counsel, and myself got together, looked at the questions, drafted, and then there was a couple drafts of the response that was put together, and that is attached in this agenda. Health Department's not here to respond to these, because I was just going to present this. It was requested by the commission last week to have this presented in writing. So that's what this report is. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read the responses. If there's anything further that you guys would like to discuss, if you want to let me know, or does this cover everything you are looking for?
I'm happy to start, since I initiated the conversation. You know, I sent a memo back to the other commissioners, and you, Randy, related to, just my hope that the responses would be less legal and somewhat sterile in nature, and more collaborative, and a method of which we could use, that this commission could use to stimulate some discussion. I think my, the intent was, was to gather more information in order to have this commission start working on a forward-looking policy on how, you know, how we're going to treat these issues moving forward. And so I, I think it would be good to have further conversation on this issue and look for ways that, at a minimum, we fully understand what the plans are of the health department and the health officer, and understand that they're looking at all information. And, you know, one of the things I think, Randy, I mentioned to you at our, at the county the county association, the league of?
Kansas Association of Counties.
Thank you. That group had some conversations, and they had health officers and their respective county commissioner on a panel, and they had a few of those, and, and it just didn't seem like, you know, and they were big counties, one was Riley County, one was Johnson County, I think.
Those are the two.
And it just didn't seem like we had the same level of back and forth that they have between commissioners and, and health officers. And I think some of it is clearly just a disagreement on, you know, how we should move forward, but, but, you know, my letter to you, too, was, you know, in summary, just a, an ask that we, we make sure we're, we're leading our community, and ensuring that everything that we're doing is not necessarily fear-based, but based on, on the best information we have today. And so I would, I would be more comfortable, as the county commissioner, having more conversations about it, and to the extent, you know, we, we eventually disagree, that's fine. I just don't think I've seen this commission lead with any policy, and that was my, my point in the original letter, is, is that even if there are things we don't necessarily control, it's, it's certainly an issue, I mean, it's, it's the most, it's the most debated issue of our century, I would say. And, and, and as leaders in our community, I think it's important that we, we, we let the public know what our intentions are, and what our desires are for, for the staff and this, in the health department, and, and even the health officer. If we end up disagreeing, I think that's part of the process, and I don't think we should avoid that. And I think, you know, one thing, and I, I want to just make this clear, because I think it's an unfortunate part of, you know, when, when management has a, in a private business, when management has a disagreement, that the entire organization doesn't know about that, and it doesn't necessarily demoralize the, the staff. And I'm cognizant of the fact that, because we have to do this in open meeting, especially because, as, as three commissioners, we can't even talk to each other, that there are conversations that we have to have, that everybody, including staff here, is that, I think without them taking some context, that's just the way we have to do it, could be a little bit demoralizing. So I just, I just want staff that, to know that, when, when they're following the policy that, that has been laid out in front of them, I, I, I think they're doing exactly what they're being asked to do, and they're doing their job. And so these particular policy disagreements in no way affect or reflect my appreciation or, or support of their job and their dedication and hard work. I just, I think, as policymakers, we're gonna have to have these hard conversations. And in a lot of ways, I think as things get better, I think getting out of this is going to be even more charged with debate, because there's gonna be a side that wants to hold on to policy and a side that doesn't, until we take some leadership roles and, and let people see that, that there's a, there's, there's safety on the other side of this. I think we're gonna be, be stuck in policy that what perhaps was well-intentioned at the time, but has, has outlived its, its life. So having said all of that, I, I would appreciate further conversation on this issue, to, to seek a, some policy goals from the commission level. I would appreciate support from the other commissioners on that.
Well, in response to what you just said, I think the difference here, Mr. Friesen, is that you have some issues that you significantly do disagree with, health department policy as it relates to the COVID event. And I think where I'm coming from is that the health department is, in fact, doing what I feel as a commissioner they should be doing. I feel that they know more about it than I do. I'm not sure that further discussion is gonna get us anywhere, because I think there's potentially two of the commissioners that think the policy's pretty well-written, and we should stay fast until things ease up much more than they have. Case in point is, the hospital had to request additional ventilators this past week. So the event isn't over, it's probably not gonna be over for some time, and I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable at this point in time that they're doing what I feel is the appropriate thing for county policy.
I believe we have appropriate policy in place. I have found the health department good to have conversations with. I have seen them accommodate the commissioner. I've seen them work on, on items and change, change wording. I have seen them visit with school board members, and, and work things out, to have a good discussion, and get to understand each other. I've contacted some schools that, they're getting along just fine, working with the health department. So I'm not sure, I'm, I'm satisfied, I, I thought the answers provided in this were very, very sufficient. And I guess, I'd like to see if these continue.
You know, a question to the commissioners, what, what policy do we have in place today? You both, you both referenced policy.
What additional policy would you want?
Well, I, I think part of that comes from a discussion, and, and I feel like we've avoided that, and, and so it's hard to answer that question.
As far as full-set policy, I don't think we need one. We have duties set in place that the health department and the health officer have, and we have.
Well, I mean, we've been put in charge by the people to oversee both of those individuals or departments. And we typically create policy for departments, and we don't have policy associated with the most debated and hotly contested issues of our century. And, and, you know, I, I think part of, part of our issue here is that, you know, I, I think maybe neither one of you are as impacted as some of the, the other people may be, and maybe you haven't particularly experienced some of the, the processes that are in place. And until you've experienced it, it may be, it may be hard for you to conceptualize why the, the public should at least understand where we think policy should be. And, and I, you know, if, if through a conversation, you know, you, you two believe that we're hands-off, and, and we're gonna put this in, in the hands of non-elected representatives of the county, I think that ought to just be in writing, and, and, and the public should know. Like, that's all I'm asking for. If you, if you don't want a discussion beyond that, then, then so be it. I, I just think that there, there has to be a process at some point that starts again. And, and I don't think we're taking the appropriate leadership role by just 100% deferring.
Well, but that, that's where I disagree with you, is that you feel strongly that you want to be more involved in the policy that they're setting, and the policy that they're implementing. I think the policy that they've set and implemented is something that I can live with. I am not a health person, and I continue to say, Daniel, and I say this respectfully, is so many of the issues that you have with kids being out of school is a school board issue, it's not our, our county issue. The, the health department is, is, is not quarantining those people, the school boards are telling those people not to come to school, and that's their right to do as a school board. And it seems like to me that we got through this item fairly quick in the COVID situation, when the Attorney General, of course, said that schools dictate that. And so I'm, I'm very willing to allow them to do what they're supposed to be doing.
Well, I, I think you're, you're, you're oversimplifying my concern, and, and focusing on one point that I've made related to schools, and, I mean, they are being quarantined by, by the, the health department, health officer, in addition to being asked. And so you disagree?
Not officially.
So, so they're not being quarantined?
No, because that has to have a special order, and a written order, and has to go through the due process for the health.
What they're getting is a, a letter that says a requested quarantine, and then later in the letter, it does state, if it comes to it, the county health officer has the right to legally enforce a quarantine. So it's kind of a?
So is that a voluntary process? I mean, are, are they required?
It is not necessarily a voluntary process. Once it's determined by the health officer, help me out, once it's determined by the health officer that there's been a violation that could hurt other people, infect other people, then they're left with no other alternative but to issue that quarantine, written quarantine order.
Okay, so? My understanding, sorry to interrupt, how it's working, like with the schools, is the schools know who was, the close contacts. They send a list of the students, in this example, students to the health department. The health department sends a letter requesting quarantine, with the, I guess not a threat, but the advice that if they don't, it can be issued a legal quarantine. But once that has been sent to the health department, I believe the school then knows, that's where, as Commissioner Sellers mentioned, the schools have determined these people are not coming back, because they've got a, the schools need to protect other students. So it's kind of a, a work between both the school district and the county on keeping kids out of school with a quarantine process, quarantine-like process.
I understand that, and I haven't ever advocated against schools' particular authority. My question is, is it, is it a voluntary request, or is it a mandatory request?
The letter suggests that you should quarantine.
So it's voluntary?
To my knowledge, we haven't issued very many court orders to quarantine.
I believe only two of them.
So, so the, I mean, there's a, there's a fairly well-known that there's a, there's a part of the population that chooses to follow those, and a part of the population that doesn't, and we're not enforcing quarantine. And my concern there is that we're, we're taking advantage of, of some people's interest in, in following the order, and, and then other people don't, and we ought to either say it's voluntary or not. Is it voluntary?
It's probably like, is it voluntary to go 45 in a 40? No. Do people do it? Yes. It's a similar situation. I think the population knows the, what that letter says, and, and what the health department has done to follow up. And, and again, I think from that standpoint, at that point in time, it becomes a school issue. I had an employee a week ago that tested positive, and stayed home for their 10 days and so forth, and I believe they, that's something similar, but I think they took it as a, you can either take it as a duty to, to do what's requested out here, or rebel, and that's a big part of our society today, is.
And I'm speaking of quarantine, not, not when you're positive, I'm speaking about people that are found with close contacts and otherwise healthy, and testing negative, and, and we're asking those people to stay home as well.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. If, if the school elects, and I'm in, in an area that I'm not, that the school can elect to do the daily testing or something of that close group.
Well, that gets them to school, but they're still quarantined. The health department?
The health department sends a letter to students that they get lists from the school of close contacts, and the letter from the health officer states that a requested quarantine. So then, at that point, most guardians and people probably are taking it as they need to stay quarantined, because that's what the letter says, requested.
We, we don't enforce it. We don't say it's voluntary. I don't think either of you actually fully understand what, what's going on. And, and we have no county policy that puts it in writing as to what, what we're gonna do.
It stated the roles of the health department and the roles of the school system. And I, my conversations with other school board members, they're not having any trouble understanding it, or they're, they're not getting, they originally got some really, a lot of questions over it, and a lot of comments over it. But once they're understood, out of the four school districts that I'm aware of, are not having any problem.
I'm really, I'm really not complaining or talking about the school districts' policies. And I, I think that's being used against me, because it's an example of where we interact with schools, and, you know, is that the, you know, continue, like, there is an interaction that occurs, whether, whether you, you know, and, and there is a constant, you know, seek of approval from the health department, from, from the schools. And, I mean, that's not unreasonable for the schools to seek health department advice, I don't think, at all. But at the same point, you know, what happens when the health department disagrees with, with the school's approach?
Well, in one respect, they got together and worked something out.
What happens if they can't work it out? What happens if they can't work it out?
I don't know, because I don't know if that's happened yet.
Well, I mean, it, it shouldn't be hard to answer the question. Either, either the school has the authority to do what they want, or the health department has, has some level of, of influence on the, on the school's decisions. It's one or the other.
Commissioner Friesen, maybe a advice or suggestion or a thought is for a policy, if you're looking for a policy, a county policy from the governing body and the board of health, if you drafted something or kind of what you're looking for, that might make it easier for the other two commissioners to see what it is and how that impacts things, knowing that the health officer still has that independence to create their own procedure. Because she's following KDHE, CDC, and then local medical collaborative recommendations. But to really, maybe that next step for what you're looking for maybe is to draft what you, a very basic overview of a policy.
I appreciate you trying to move us forward here, and, and I think that's a fair request. And it's, that, this is just part of the challenge, um, associated, like, I would love to have these conversations with the two of you outside of a public meeting, and I think we would get, get a lot quicker, you know, get things done a lot quicker, and, and there would be a lot less awkwardness. It's just an unfortunate part of the process.
It's true, but you couldn't have a conversation even with five people with two other commissioners.
No, what, what you're talking about is a serial conversation where we're trying to come up with, with, with a, an, an action item that, that has a binding decision-making. I'm talking about having a conversation with you to better understand your position on an issue, so we don't have to have awkward conversations in, in a public meeting. And to the extent that's not available to me, apologize that we have to have these awkward conversations. And like I said, I apologize that it, you know, it may be interpreted as, you know, undermining. I, I, I think it's, 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 it's a conversation I would have with, with, with anyone in my, you know, as a leadership role in, in my business, I would definitely have these conversations if I was expected to be leading an organization. And it's just, it's just an unfortunate part of the process or an important part of the process, however you want to look at it. But, um, your point's fine, Randy, I appreciate it. Thank you for pushing this forward.
All right, any other discussions on that item? The only other thing I just was going to mention, a reminder, I know everyone's planning on being there, that we're having the joint Reno County mayors and area legislators dinner discussion tonight at Nickerson, Nickerson Community Center at 6:00 PM. And their dinner will be served, so there are a few items, discussion items on the agenda, countywide issues you want to talk about, you know, with the various cities, if they have issues, and then any legislative items you have for our state representatives to kind of bring up those tonight.
Is this, is this a county-led meeting, like a county commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Any attendance from the mayors?
Yes, uh, very, quite a few of the mayors. I think only a few small, of the small cities are not, maybe not attending, but most of the cities are attending, and all the local representatives, area legislators have all said they will, will try to be there.
Could, uh, we request Sean to quickly make some table name things for these people? Because some of us are not good at meeting a large group, and the, the people that I saw on that list, I know where you, so it'd help me greatly to.
We can have something prepared.
Thank you.
Commissioner Friesen? Has anybody checked the audio lately? Is it better?
I know Mike had looked into it, and we couldn't find any issues. He had tested with his, with various laptops, and things were working fine. I'm not sure what the, I'll have to check to see. Tim, I don't know if you, if he's mentioned anything to you?
We went through several, uh, several systems, and, um, we, the audio sounded fine on everything we tried it on. So it may be a matter of if there's any county machines that are having the issue, we can certainly come to.
And I think what Mike had mentioned to me, now, sometimes when various people are speaking, you may have to turn the volume up quite a bit to hear them. Again, the microphones are in the ceilings, and depending on how loud someone presenting or a commissioner at a moment is speaking can also affect the audio. And with, the thought is, if we put microphones in here, then there'd be greater distortion, and it'd mess it up more.
Okay, I'll, I'll check it. Maybe this is the blue. I, I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
A couple of quick things. We already had discussion today about the fire that was out by Pretty Prairie, and, and fortunately, we got it taken care of. But I think it just reminds all of us is how critical this, uh, fire response is in Reno County. And I'm looking forward to this new employee that we're putting on to hopefully, uh, even better our ability to respond to these things, because they're so serious when they happen. And so looking forward to that. Um, then the only other thing that I would have is I want to compliment Commissioner Friesen. I don't compliment him enough, but his idea of moving the, uh, the, uh, rezoning or application on the gravel pit up, uh, was excellent. We shouldn't make citizens wait for four hours for an agenda item. And I guess I might ask the county staff to look at that as you're preparing agendas that we, at least speaking for myself, I'd like to get the, the crowd through their items early and leave our items to the end. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
I don't have anything to say, except, uh, once in a while, uh, being a, being around machinery and guns and so forth, uh, I have a little audio problem myself once in a while when you talk so soft. But that's my problem. She says I ought to have an earring.
I, I, I talk soft, I've been known to mumble. Just, you just need to say when I'm talking soft, and I'd be happy to speak up.
Chairman, can I have 30 minutes, seconds here? I forgot one. Everybody's paying their tax statements now. If you look at your tax statements, you can see that the Board of County Commissioners reduced the mill levy 5.05 mills for this year. I've yet to have one taxpayer come up to me and say that they've noticed it on their tax statement. And I think it's interesting. Nobody notices something favorable to them. The only time it's vouched to our attention is when we increase something. So it, I had, I went to a taxpayer that pays a lot of taxes in Reno County, and I said, "Did you notice that?" And they said, "No." And it's right here on the statement. So, you know, we're damned if we do, and we're damned if we don't. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the, I, I wanted to, I was going to share this with you guys, and I'll share it after the meeting, send it to Randy, but, um, what, uh, what county is Colby in? Thomas? Yeah. Well, they do a really nice little, um, breakout that's in the, um, tax statements. And it says, you know, this part's to the college, this part's to the, and they have it in a pie chart, and then they, then they break out from a budget perspective, they have health services and general costs and public works, and it explains to the taxpayer where all their money's going. And I, I thought it would be something we, we should look at doing here.
Give a copy of that to the.
I'll, I'll send it to you guys.
Good.
Are we here?
Now, we've got an executive session for, for 30 minutes. For non-elected personnel, and I would take a motion for that. If not, I move. You move, okay. Second? Second? Any further discussion?
That'll include, include just the commissioners and myself.
And we'll start at 2:00, be out at 2:30. Roll call.
Commissioner Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirst?
Yes.